Were you ready?
We're ready.
Roll.
Good morning and welcome to our April second meeting of the Trinity County Board of Supervisors. If you'll join me Supervisor Carpenter Harris will lead us with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, so we will begin this meeting with a presentation. Under the clerk of the board, item 1.1, receive an update from U.S. Forest Service Representatives regarding matters of interest in Trinity County. Welcome Tara.
Good morning, everyone, on this bright sunny day. Appreciate the ability to come and speak to you again today. I wanted to give you a little bit of an update on some of the work that's gone on so far this fiscal year. And as you know, our fiscal year ends September 30th. And begins again October 1st. So so far this fiscal year, we've accomplished nearly 3,000 acres of fuels reduction in Trinity County. I know sometimes the way that we count acres can be confusing. Sometimes we get credit for accomplishment when we get it under a contract. These acres specifically are acres that have actually been implemented. So that's, wanted to just clarify that. And while this represents a significant increase in what we have been getting done through the first couple quarter and a half, it's not anywhere near where we need to be. So by the end of the fiscal year, we'll have much, much higher numbers. But given the weather constraints and the holidays, 3,000 acres under our belt is a good start. Wanted to give you some more feedback on how we're investing in our local partners. The forest continues to invest in local partners and agreements designed to increase our pace and scale. This includes partner led NIPA. And that's evident in the Bowerman project, as well as the Junction City project that will be getting started once Bowerman's completed. And the Weaverville Community Forest Fuels Reduction Project that will be taken on with the RCD. We're also using our partners to help get fuels reduction implementation work done to complete wildlife surveys, for trail building, restoration, and other recreational opportunities, for road maintenance and minor repairs. And as you well know, the temp bridge use that we've been using at Forest Glen is a county-owned bridge. So we really appreciate being able to use that to get those fuels off the landscape. We continue to work closely with the Trinity County Collaborative Group and meet with them monthly. This month we'll have a field trip. I will get the invite for that field trip out to all of you. So if any of you want to attend, you're more than welcome. We are looking forward to our second annual Partner Appreciation BBQ this summer. It will be held June 5th. So I do have that date. Wanted to give you an update on our fire cameras. That scoping period was extended to facilitate local input. I became aware of the fact that it didn't, the scoping document didn't make it into the Trinity Journal. And while the journal isn't our newspaper of record because it's not a daily publication, I have made sure and instructed my staff to make sure we get any of our projects into the local paper so that people know what we're doing and they have a chance to comment. That should come out today, I'm sorry, Wednesday, in this, in this week's paper. If it, if there's any problem with that and you have any questions, please reach out and I can send you a copy of the scoping letter.
And excuse me Tara, which, which one is that for?
The fire cameras in Trinity County.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Planning, we should be finishing up the Hyam Palm document in June. That is, represents about 12,500 acres. So we'll be excited to do that. And we have implementation, we'll be hustling to turn around and get contracts and agreements put in place to get those treatments going in Hyam Palm this summer. We'll get those started. We'll also be looking to get the whole, about, anywhere about around 2,000 to 3,000 acres of the pilot project into a contract as well. And that will happen, contract will go into grants and agreements early summer. So that'll be exciting to get that work actually implemented. Let's see. We do ongoing work, we do have ongoing work in the, with the IRSC, so the service contract, sorry for using all the, we have a contract, a large contract doing fuels reduction work in the August fire footprint that was ongoing last year. It's the same contract that took care of the downed trees on the 16 road, got some of that chipping done. That contract continues this summer and we'll do more fuels reduction work. Primarily the stuff left is in the August fire footprint. We talked about, oh, so Bowerman is expected to come out really this summer and have implementation work. If you're not familiar with the Bowerman project, it's up along Bowerman Ridge in the North County. And Trinity Camps should get signed, the, our sister district, the National Recreation area has been working on that Trinity Camps NIPA, which should be out and implementation will be going, ongoing this summer. And we're working closely to coordinate the campground work itself so that we're not closing a bunch of campgrounds all at one time. And we're really working on a schedule. We're certainly work with you to make sure we are implementing on a schedule that doesn't restrict access to the lake and things. So we'll, we'll work on that. Recreation has been really busy. We're leveraging our fuels reduction agreements to address the hazard trees in the campgrounds because hazard trees in the campgrounds do represent a fuels problem. So we've been getting some of that work done. Our courtesy docks will begin to be, are on schedule to be installed by either May 1 or May 17 for many of the ones along the lake. Wanted to let you know the Alpine Dock was vandalized, all the cables and shackles were stolen. So that's unfortunate. That will give us a little bit of a setback. But the Clark Springs Dock is in and we should be getting that open pending the water system checkout. You know, the normal things we do every year to check, get the water system up and running.
Tara, I'm sorry to interrupt again, but you mentioned one that where there was vandalism and I'd been hearing about that for what people referring to as Bowerman, but I think you just used a different name. So am I just, are they the same thing?
The Alpine Dock is different is my understanding. But I can, I can follow up on that with you.
I, I've talked to Sarah, so I can share information, but I just was wondering if we had a different one or we just had two different names and I, I wasn't familiar.
I wish I could give you, I will check into it on my end as well.
Okay.
Supervisor, thank you.
I don't know which dock the Alpine Dock is. Where exactly is that?
I will, I'm not as sure. I apologize. I just know that's how my rec officer referred to it was Alpine Dock.
Thank you.
Apparently needs to spend more time in the lake. Okay. The trails work. I can tell you, we will have two backcountry crews again this year. We will have five week-long volunteer trips, as well as five week-long trips with Ascend. Ascend is working on their kids camp at East Weaver now. So we're excited about that. The Bigfoot Challenge is open and active. So we anticipate a lot of traffic here in our local basin trails. Early recon indicates a high level of wind thrown trees. So we expect to be doing a lot of logouts to get our trails open. And as soon, we'll be getting our, our wilderness patrols and our crew leads will be getting out to access the trailheads in the next couple of weeks and looking to get all those roads opened up and make sure they're available and open. In summary, again, I want to, you know, point out that this year is going to be known as the year of implementation. You know, we have, have had a lot of contracts put together. We have agreements that we're working on. We continue to modify the agreements that we have to reinvest in this landscape funding that we've gotten, especially leveraging our local partners and our current agreements. So I look forward to getting a lot of work done as the weather starts to change and stay dry so we can get out in the woods and get some equipment operating. I'm also thrilled to say that our fuels crew was able to access a masticator. So we have a masticator on hand on the west side. So we can put that to good use as well. All right, I'll take any questions. If they're late questions, I'm not promising any great answers.
Any update on a second spot to the good neighbor?
Yes, so we're working through that. Marcus Nova is our Landscape Implementation Officer. And he is currently working with Monique and David to Quebec to work on how to invest another, I believe it's $1.5 million into the good neighbor agreement. And that's following the $1.4 million we put in last year. So yeah, that's, it's, we're really excited to be partnering with Trinity County.
Thank you, network.
I will just, since you're here, I'll just mention, you covered some of the water stuff, but I had been talking to Sarah. And again, it had been referred to me as the Bowerman rampant, that the like one-inch cables had been damaged and stolen. And so they were basically having to order them and weren't sure when they were coming in. So they were opening up Cedar Stock, is that the right? A month early to allow, and of course, people would like both open, but still. And then the other one that she mentioned that has been coming up a lot is the Marina location between, where is it right now? Cedar Stock versus going to Trinity Center?
Yes, I'm, I'm aware that we're, we're trying to work through that.
Yeah.
With the permittee and, and, and get a dock up to Trinity Center.
And I just wanted to comment because there had been a lot going around of rumors, false information, whatever. And so Sarah was very helpful to try to clarify some of that and say, you know, indeed, the permit holder is expected to have it up there. They had a meeting recently. That permit holder is now working on the project management maintenance plan that needs to happen so that they can schedule it to get it up there. So that, I just wanted folks to know that that is underway. And much like Tara keeps us informed on the forest matters, Sarah's trying to do the same with, with water. And maybe we need to invite her to come give an update here soon too.
Sure, I will happily pass that on. And I think that you're right about the Bowerman and Alpine being, being the same.
It could, yeah, it could be. I, I have no doubt that people give them different names. You know, there's an official name and the other, but.
Yep, absolutely.
All right.
Well, thank you for that. Any other questions?
Thank you. Oh, I did have one more. I'm sorry. I saw an email this morning about, where is it? It was some Forest Service related meeting that's taking place, oh, Northwest Forest Plan Federal Advisory Committee to meet in Weaverville. And I thought, okay, I know nothing about this. And so maybe if you could give us anything that you know about that?
Sure. Then they're looking to update the Northwest Forest Plan, which is one of the guiding documents for how we manage the forest, especially in northern owl spotted, northern spotted owl habitat areas. And so they're looking to update that, that guidance. And there's a panel that's been put together. It's got some, a lot of different representatives. One of the representatives on that panel is Nick Goulet, who, so we, the Forest Services isn't actually leading that meeting. It's that panel is, they've been rotating kind of around the northwest. And they'll be holding that meeting in Weaverville. And so that's what that, that meeting is about. But Nick Goulet is the, one of the people on that panel.
Is that the same panel that was at the governor's task force meeting? Or does it just have some of the same part?
No, some, some of the same partners, I believe. So this one is specifically focused on renewing and reviewing the Northwest Forest Plan.
For all the questions, thank you.
No, that, that's good. I'm gonna bring a lake friend next time.
Well, that seems to be, with the, with the lake filling up, definitely there's a lot of interest, that's for sure.
Yes.
So on a good news point, I had my town hall meeting in Hayfork a week or so ago and got plenty of good reviews on Tara.
Oh.
Yeah, it was, it was really, really nice to see that the people of the Hayfork community feel that the Forest Service and the people of the Hayfork community are starting to work together. So it was nice to hear.
Thank you very much Supervisor. And you know, it was in one of the, one of our public meetings that somebody mentioned the Kellogg Fuel Break, like, hey, why don't you get out and get that maintained? And so I was able to quickly review that NIPA and pivot and make sure that all got maintained. And that's all been, that contract's been completed. We just have to burn the piles that were created. But really appreciate the, the information from the local communities and being part of helping us manage a forest. It's, it's their national forest. So really appreciate that, sir.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. You guys have a great day.
Thanks, Sarah. Okay, under planning and zoning, item 1.2, receive a presentation from consultant group Mentor Harnish regarding the housing element update. Ed, are you gonna introduce them? Okay, thank you.
Morning Chair, Supervisors. Ed Presley, Deputy Director of Community Development. And this morning, we have a good presentation on the housing element update. So hopefully Jim is sitting there chomping at the bit, ready to go. And he will lead you through it and then answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Good morning, Chair Luitweiler and Board Members. My name is Jim Harnish. I'm the Principal and Owner of Mentor Harnish and the Project Advisor for the overall general plan update. Part of which, most recently now, is the housing element update. And I wanted to introduce Ryan Lester, Project Manager with Mentor Harnish, who is the manager for the housing element update. And he's going to make the presentation today. We have a PowerPoint presentation that Ryan prepared that will provide a pretty good background on the reason for housing elements, what the contents are and where we are on the project. So Ryan, with that, take it away.
Okay. Thank you, Jim. I'll just share my screen here, if that's okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Can you see my PowerPoint there?
Yes, sir.
Perfect. Okay. Well, thank you for having me today to talk about the housing element update. We have a number of slides. I'll try to work through them fairly quickly. If you have questions throughout the presentation, please feel free to ask. So today, what we're gonna talk about, we'll do a little project overview. We'll talk about housing element basics, what a housing element is. We'll talk about our community engagement that's planned for the project. And then we'll end with talking about next steps. So project overview. So this project is scoped in seven phases. So first phase is just a project initiation, getting the community engagement program up and running, meeting with staff and beginning to collect data. Second phase is policy analysis and alternatives. So this is where we start to update the housing element. We will hold a community workshop and gather input and continue to gather data. Then the third and fourth phases are the draft housing element. So first, working with staff to review and revise an admin draft. And then in phase four, the public review draft housing element. So this will present to the public and have a minimum of 30-day public review period. We'll collect all the comments we receive and then we'll take 10 business days minimum to respond. And that's actually required by state law. So we'll revise the housing element to react to public input received. And then following that public review period and revision, we will submit the housing element to HCD for initial 90-day review. HCD is the California Department of Housing and Community Development. And they get a minimum of two reviews of your document. The draft document, they get 90 days to review. And then the adopted document, they get 60 days to review. So phase five is HCD review. So we'll submit the document. And then we'll work with HCD through the process to respond to any comments or questions they have. Phase six is our environmental review. And then phase seven is our final review and adoption. And then resubmitting the, the adopted housing element to the state for 60-day follow-up review and certification. Our project schedule kind of looks like this. We're in the middle of project initiation. We've already begun the housing policy analysis. We are holding a study session today. We are holding a study session today. We'll also be presenting an online workshop and a survey. And we'll be conducting stakeholder interviews with local stakeholders. This can be housing advocates, developers, nonprofit agencies, et cetera, to get, really get an idea of the housing needs and concerns in the community. During the admin draft phase, we'll hold a second workshop. So this is scheduled for June currently. The second workshop will be on the new fair housing section and really asking for public input on some of our early findings. We'll also hold another study session with the board. During the public review draft phase, we'll also hold additional study sessions just to make sure that the board is very clear on everything that is in the Housing Element and what we're submitting to HCD. And then during the, during the review and adoption phase, we'll also have obviously a planning commission and Board of Supervisors adoption hearings. And these will have more opportunities for public input. So Housing Element Basics. So what is the Housing Element? So Housing Element is one of nine elements or chapters of the county's general plan. But it's the only element that has to be written and adopted on a schedule that's prescribed by the state. So the county is currently on a four-year Housing Element schedule. So they have to, the county needs to update its Housing Element every four years. And this is tied to the five-year schedule for the RTP update. We have received some information from the state on how the county can work towards an eight-year Housing Element schedule. So you don't have to do your Housing Element every four years. And we're going to be investigating that opportunity with staff and HCD. Total project budget currently is projected at $148,000. I will say, we've also secured some technical assistance from the state that will hopefully help with some budget savings. So what does the Housing Element do? So the Housing Element really works to identify what the existing housing needs are and the housing needs through the planning period. So we're looking through 2028 into 2029. And what will the housing needs be then? And then it identifies opportunities as well as constraints or barriers to housing production. It reacts to those by establishing an action plan to meet the needs, to work to overcome those constraints. And then finally, importantly, excuse me, it updates county practices and regulations to reflect new state laws. So as you likely know, there's constantly, in the last 10 years, there's been a constant stream of new housing legislation coming down from the state. So by requiring the Housing Element to be updated regularly, the state ensures that everyone's Housing Element is in compliance with new state laws. I have a slide here, I'm not gonna read all these, but it's just a list of some of the relevant legislation. One I will point out here is the second bullet down, affirmatively furthering fair housing. I'll talk about this quickly later in the presentation. But this is a new law that's really affected housing elements. We have to actually include a whole new section in the Housing Element called affirmatively furthering fair housing and analyze data and maps from the state to discuss fair housing issues in the community. This new section is fairly long. It's typically 80 to 100 pages, has a lot of maps and a lot of data. So this is one piece of legislation that really has a major impact on the Housing Element in this cycle. It's brand new. So what are the goals of the Housing Element? So Housing Element really works to identify strategies and programs that focus on, so how do we keep the existing affordable housing in the community? How can we maximize housing opportunities? As well as assisting in the provision of affordable housing. This is more feasible for some jurisdictions than others, just depending on funding and partnerships with local builders. It also works to remove barriers to housing investment and to promote fair and equal housing opportunities. So there's a number of sections of the Housing Element. The first is the Housing Needs Assessment, where we really look at the current housing needs as well as the needs through 2028 and really try to identify those in data. We look, we do a constraints analysis. And this is where we look at non-governmental and governmental barriers to production. A good example of a governmental constraint would be restrictive development standards. Or maybe you have a, you know, maybe a jurisdiction might have a 50-foot setback requirement. Well, that would really constrain what you could do on your, on a smaller parcel especially. So that might be a government constraint you talked about. And then non-governmental constraints. In California, the, you know, high cost of land and construction are fairly obvious constraints. So we need to identify those, analyze what they look like in the community, and then do what we can to work to overcome those constraints. The Housing Sites Inventory, this is where we identify sites to meet the local housing needs. So where are residentially zoned lands? Where is it situated? How many parcels are available? You know, what are the infrastructure needs on those parcels? That's what the Housing Sites Inventory really looks to do. And then the policy document, which is your action plan. So this is goals, policies and programs to address housing needs, work to remove constraints and work to overcome fair housing issues. And then finally, the big fair housing analysis. So I've got a description here from the state of what they feel affirmatively furthering fair housing should be. But really what the purpose of this section is to identify fair housing issues in the community, identify what the contributing factors to those may be, and then to start to put in place some actions to start to overcome those. So the section really focuses on working to combat housing discrimination, working to overcome racial bias and historic patterns of segregation, to lift barriers that restrict access to housing and to ultimately foster inclusive communities. Community engagement, we have a number of community engagement efforts in this project. Obviously, community engagement is critical to the Housing Element. So we have study sessions, virtual community workshops. We're gonna do two of these. They're gonna have surveys and exercises tied to them. We, we propose virtual community workshops, not just for cost savings, but also because what we found is at a lot of our housing elements, we'll hold a workshop and, you know, maybe you get 15 people there and you have great interactions with 15 people. But a Housing Element can be a one to two-year project. People come and go. And if that workshop is early on in the project and that's the only opportunity people have to interact on that subject, it really, you only reach 15 people, right? So we've found that by doing virtual community workshops that have a video that explains the information that is needed and then is tied to a survey, then as people involve themselves or begin to participate in the Housing Element at any point in time, they can watch that video, get that information, do that survey and submit it to us. And it's just, it's actually, we found it's a really efficient, better way to reach a greater percentage of the community.
Can I just, I'm sorry, can I just ask you? So when you describe that, does it include that there's live interaction in these virtual community workshops?
Yeah, so as we have it scoped currently, it would not be a live interaction. That, that really gets to the participants who can be there at a certain time, at a certain place or, you know, at a certain time online. We do want to reach a larger proportion of the community. So we've scoped this as informational video and exercises on the website to go along with.
Okay, I'll come back to that, thank you.
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, we also have stakeholder interviews planned. So this is where we send out invites to developers, housing advocates, stakeholders in the community. And we spend about 45 minutes to an hour talking to them about what their needs are, who their community is, what the constraints that they see, the issues and opportunities, and really get that on-the-ground level knowledge of what's happening in the county. And then again, we will have adoption hearings with the planning commission and Board of Supervisors with public participation as well. Community workshops again, so the first workshop will really focus on housing concerns and needs. Usually with this workshop, there's a lot of education. So the slides about what is a Housing Element? What's the purpose? What are we trying to do? That will be incorporated into this workshop so that people have a good base level of understanding of what a Housing Element is and what we're doing so that they can give us the feedback that we're looking for. And then the second workshop will be on fair housing. So presenting some of our findings from the data that we received from the state and then asking for comments on those findings and on other fair housing issues in the community that may not appear in the data. Engagement tools, so newsletters, just like with the general plan, we're gonna do newsletters for the Housing Element. Website, we've already added a page to the general plan website for the Housing Element and started to put some informational text there just to let people know what a Housing Element is, et cetera. We use the website as kind of the central hub for the Housing Element. We'll post all our documents there, we'll post our event notices, et cetera, and really want to bring people back there. Just like with the general plan, people can send us a comment or join the email list right from the page. And it's really easy. We're gonna work with the county to use any social media platforms that the county already uses to facilitate engagement at our events. We'll work with local groups and stakeholders, we'll hold virtual workshops, online surveys, and then again, study sessions and hearings. So again, the public education is really important in the Housing Element. The document can be 300 pages and it's really hard for people to pick up a 300-page Housing Element and to get it and read it and digest it and then give you feedback on their own. So we've really tried to use the website to provide frequently asked questions, things like that, so that people can get that knowledge very quickly. It's summarized concisely, so they don't have to read the whole document just to understand what's happening. They can immediately start to give us their input. So next steps from here, so we'll continue with data collection and assessment. We'll review the status of the existing goals, policies and programs from the previous Housing Element, make suggestions for the current Housing Element update. We'll continue preparation of the needs assessment and constraints analysis. These are two fairly long sections, about 40 to 50 pages usually each. And we'll work with staff to review and revise those. We'll start stakeholder interviews. And then we're already working on preparing the virtual community workshop number one and survey. And it sounds like we may have some direction on that. So with that, I'll stop sharing my screen and just say we're open for questions and any comments you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Supervisors have questions?
Ryan, I've got a couple of questions for you. Maybe I should have stopped you because now they sort of fade a bit. So let's see, what does it do at IDs the current and future housing needs? It IDs the opportunities and barriers on the housing. It establishes an action plan to meet those needs. That's what I want to know. What in your experience, have you seen when you do your Housing Element updates for other jurisdictions? And I mean, this kind of touches several things, you know, the government restrictive development standard, you know, piece. What, what could, what do you think we could expect in terms of government response to meet the needs that we end up identifying?
Yeah, that's actually a great question. In this Housing Element cycle, the state has a lot more authority to review and make asks of the Housing Element. So what we've been seeing is a lot of emphasis on engagement with the community. So having, if you have a program, you know, don't just have the program. HCD wants to see what engagement are you gonna do related to that program? Who are you gonna talk to and where? We've also seen a big increase in emphasis on the state on what they call place-based strategies. So they don't want you to just plan for your whole community with a flat level of policies and programs that are just county-wide. They actually want to see you dial in to certain communities and certain neighborhoods and have some place-based actions that work on a smaller, smaller level and that target issues or needs in a segment of the community. So we've seen a lot of that. Certainly with more urban jurisdictions, we've seen a lot of pushback related to development standards. So HCD always wants to see more height, more density, et cetera. I don't know that that will be the case with Trinity County, obviously. It's a very different place and it's not an urbanized Bay Area city, right? So I would expect to see a, an expanded slate of programs, but not to have it go above and beyond in the way that Bay Area cities need to go to. But HCD will want to see, you know, how, what are we identifying? And how are we starting to chip away at some of those issues?
So I have asked that.
I want to follow up kind of on his answer to your question, if I can, please. Because the issue and I, the way I hear Supervisor Cox's question and the way I see it is what, we're going to identify constraints caused by government. It's not going to be our planning department. It's the state of California that's causing the constraints on development in Trinity County. It's the outrageous cost to try to build to what California insists we build. So how can we, in our Housing Element, address those problems when they're brought on by the state? When we have no control over the state of California?
Yeah, I completely understand. Many of our clients have, you know, even considered, well, if we're gonna write up constraints, let's talk about state constraints. We never end up doing it because it's a big costly measure in the state. Honestly, they'll just skim the section and go to your responsibilities. But as far as constraints, I would expect to see a lot of issues with compliance with state law. So, you know, are we allowing for emergency shelters in the way that the state is now requiring? Are we allowing for traditional and supportive housing in the way that the state is now requiring? So we'll actually do a write-up of the state law and then we'll do a write-up of, okay, are we in compliance, right? Is the county in compliance with this and what needs to be done? So a lot of the constraints that we end up overcoming are literally identified in state law. And so a constraints program will be like county code update. And then it will list all the things and the government codes that need to be complied with. With most jurisdictions, there's eight to 10 things listed in that program, I would say. But that's really what we're looking at. As far as the high cost of construction, the high cost of environmental analysis, things like that, issues with availability, financing, things that really are outside of the control of the county, all, any jurisdiction can really do is work to incentivize production just generally to try to start to overcome some of those things.
Go ahead.
So I guess what I am, what I was hopeful for, because in the last Housing Element update, I followed it, I would say vaguely. And it looked to me like what I'm hearing this one to be is just an action step that we have to take to the tune of about $150,000 just in order to be compliant with state mandate. But what I was hopeful for was that there would be a piece of the service you provide to us that would actually assist us in finding ways to overcome some barriers, not just be compliant with what the state is telling us to do. And I'm wondering if you have seen that kind of an outcome in the other, in any other jurisdiction you've served?
Sure, sure. And, you know, we can take, we can take the constraints analysis as far as your direction leads us. So if that's where you would like us to go, above and beyond just compliance, we'd be happy to do so. Most jurisdictions, especially more urbanized jurisdictions that are having a lot of requirements thrown at them, don't have the capacity to go above and beyond what's already required. If you, you know, housing needs in the county are obviously extremely important. And if we want to dive into some of those issues and constraints and really look at making an action plan to overcome some of those beyond state law, we're happy to do so.
And I still, I have to kind of push back a little bit because that's, I get that we have to be compliant with state law. My problem is that that is the constraint on development. It's the programs that we're going through this paperwork so that we are compliant. That's the holdup to development. And so how do we get that through to the state in this process where we're, they are the problem? That's what is stopping people from developing in Trinity County is because we have these state programs that make it impossible for people to actually build.
I understand that concern and we've heard that from other jurisdictions as well. We could include an analysis of that if the board directed us to.
Yeah, I would.
Yeah, I I would, I would just add and support what Ryan said, we're working at the direction of the board ultimately. And if this is a priority of yours, we can certainly orient the housing element. To address these issues that we may not traditionally address or may not resonate that much with HCD's staff. But at least get the word back to them that in Trinity County, that these are the clear issues that the board has identified and. If it's possible, put together some programs that could begin to address these, the. What you're describing really is state impediments to solving some of the housing problems here.
Yeah, Jim, I appreciate that, and I think if anything, like what I'm hearing now and understanding from this dialogue and Ryan, thank you. I appreciate your perspective and and do appreciate your answers. And what it seems to me maybe is that what comes out of this when we have clearly identified. In writing what our constraints are, particularly with updated legislation that we now have to be compliant with. Maybe we end up taking the list of what comes and collaborating with our other rural counties. To see what we can do collectively, I'm not sure they are the platform or the forum to get that work done, is what I'm thinking. If would you agree that's kind of what I'm hearing from you, you you are here to help us be compliant, what we do with that. Compliance and what we identify as our constraints kind of becomes sort of our problem following.
Well, I, sorry, go ahead, Jim.
The, so the county is obligated to comply with state law to prepare a housing element, but you don't. You you can use this as an opportunity to address these issues that have been vexing the county that have been concerning you. And so that we can use this as a forum to come back to the state and say, hey, these are some. Issues that we can't resolve on our own because. Of some issues that the state is getting in the way of your resolution of these, whatever the issues are. And it it may not resonate with HCD through their review, but. It certainly won't hurt to have the draft to address these issues in in clear detail. The other thing I, while I'm speaking, I would suggest that if the. Board members have thoughts about individual stakeholders. Who we should be talking to, please pass their names on to Ed, so that we can add them to our stakeholder interview list, so we get. As full of understanding of what the challenges are, the housing challenges in in Trinity County are from those. People who are close to the issue, whether they're developers or advocates. Or nonprofit organizations or others who have specifics, experience and interest in Trinity County housing.
Okay, thank you, we will do that.
Sorry.
I have some, but I just wanted to make sure everybody had a chance, okay. Well, thank you, yeah, first of all, I mentioned, Jim, we actually have a community development workshop coming up in on April twenty third and one of the four. Categories is housing because it is, as you noted, such an important aspect for us. So out of that, we will have people self selecting into a small group focused on housing, so that'll be a shortlist, but. I'm glad that you're opening up that invitation to everyone to say, raise your hand if if you're want to be actively engaged in the conversation, because I I do think that's important. And it comes back to my question earlier about the virtual, when I thought I was hearing what I was hearing. About it not having a live engagement opportunity. I just think back to when we started the general plan, I don't remember how many there were, but there were a handful of these. Working groups, Jim, you'll have to correct me with what the right terminology was.
Focus groups, yeah.
Focus groups, and so for other components of the general plan, we felt it was important to invite, engage. Document, follow up with these groups live. And for the housing, which to me is one of the very most important parts of the plan. We're saying, we'll show you a video and invite you to the website. And that to me doesn't jive, that's my personal view, I just think we we need engagement. Even if, when I thought at least that there was going to be live virtual, I thought, well, then we need to host one of those. In this room so that people that don't have internet can come in here and engage. Live here if they can't do it from home and so forth, but whatever that is, my view, and if there's board consensus, we can find out. That would be some direction to staff that we need live engagement beyond just what I've seen described here. People agree?
I would agree with that, I've actually been involved with a couple. Housing element updates that we did, I believe in house, where the planning commission went to each. Community, we had, we had planning commission meeting in Mad River, we had a planning commission meeting in. And Hayfork and they were special meetings that. That we did for the housing element update and there were a lot of people that were engaged. Some of them didn't exactly engage. With what we were dealing with, but they had concerns with housing and it was. It was, it was a good conversation and it brought up a lot of other things too. People didn't know how to express that, well, when you have an opportunity and you have a someone's ear, you can, you can get there.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm curious to know if when you are addressing the housing issues and you're looking at constraints. Are the 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 supporting infrastructures and such that are demanded within housing considered as well, so. For example, like available water, condition of small water, small community water districts. The the availability of homeowners insurance and things like that, those are. Housing is one thing, but then to maintain that housing and to be able to live in that housing, you have to have all of these other. Components and I know that we have some significant constraints in the areas that I just spoke of, so I was just curious to know if that is anyway. If that's kind of brought into the picture when you look at, look at this.
Yeah, great, great question, because it absolutely is, so usually in the constraints analysis, we'll talk about. Each of one of those potential constraints generally and describe them. And then when we actually do the site inventory where we're identifying residentially zoned capacity. Will need to. Relate that analysis to each of those sites, the state doesn't want us including sites as housing capacity that have some of those major constraints, right? We would want to pick sites that have access to infrastructure and don't have extra costs, things like that. That, you know, homeowners insurance, fire, fire insurance, as you mentioned. We we would take those issues into account and we would want to map those with our sites and see which of our sites. Really has has the the least amount of constraints.
Okay, thank you.
I'll just mention one thing, I see Bella has her hand up, but. On your comment, John Lutwiler about the focus groups, one of the six focus groups is. Charged with addressing housing, but it happens to be land use zoning and housing combined as one topic for one of the focus groups, so. We haven't, we did not devote a single focus group to just housing. But so we've addressed it, but I don't think it probably gets to the extent that you're looking for in terms of that. Intense input on housing and the housing element.
Thank you, yeah, we, you know, hopefully there will be something that comes out of our community development workshop, but that'll be. You know, based on a forty minute workshop, you know, small group workshop, so there will definitely be more opportunities and it sounds like there's board consensus for their. Us to, you know, staff to work with you on a, an enhanced way to engage our community about this. Two other things I have and then I'll go to Bella. I I I made my note here to remind myself, the true needs. I I have to say, I I didn't read in detail every bit of the last plan, but I did see some parts and some people pointed out. And if I'm understanding it correctly, it, in the end, it said, we needed one more house in Trinity County. And the result of, and the reason for that was because we have a lot of homes that are second homes, vacation homes, things like that. But if you look at how many people in average, how many people in a family and how many families then need housing and you look at all the housing, you say, oh, well, you need one more house. And that, of course, couldn't be any further from the truth. Possible, so I'm trying to understand how will we avoid that same outcome this time?
Yeah, that's a great question, so looking at the previous housing element. The one way that they work to counteract that because. The the state's regional housing needs allocation defines exactly how many, how much capacity you need to provide, right? The county, just as in the last housing element, was assigned a need of two units. So technically, as far as the state is concerned, we just need to show that we have. Available site to accommodate two lower income units, so two higher density multifamily areas, parcels, right? But in the house, in the previous housing element, they didn't just do the minimum, so the sites inventory, the county included a sites inventory that had. Quite a few sites, actually, there's a whole table of sites. And really use the housing element to i- to identify and evaluate those sites. Beyond just what the state is requiring. You are in kind of a unique situation, every one of our other clients. Is wringing their hands over their their regional housing needs allocation because it's really, really high. Trinity County is in a different spot where you're like you're saying, the the arena is very low, but we know that the housing need is greater than that. We know we have a lot of second homes, vacation homes, things like that, that really limit our capacity. So we don't want to just do the minimum in the sites inventory, let's, let's really include some areas where there's some capacity and not, not just the minimum.
Okay, so I guess what I'm hearing is that 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 particular data point, and they can always skew your view. Is really tied to what some governmental statistics and and formulas says we need versus what we really need and and that. This plan will address both, it it will say, okay, yes, at the bigger picture level, you have to do this because the state mandates in their magic wisdom. And then the other part will be, and here's reality about what's going on, where you can do things, what you might need, all those things, okay, thank you.
And and correct me if I'm wrong, Ryan, but we wouldn't want to force. A higher number on that arena than we have to because that becomes a requirement.
Exactly, yes.
And then I think my last one. We talk about constraints and I and I understand and respect, we do have a lot of constraints put on us, federal government, state, so forth. We also have our own constraints, including the fact that we have a planning department that is so drastically understaffed. And so one of the things I noted recently is that in California, if a county adopts. An accessory dwelling unit. Policy program ordinance, I can't remember the terminology, then they must process permits within sixty days. And and we've talked about that, you know, there are counties I've seen that have put up pre approved. Plans for ADUs and so forth, and so that's something that we can potentially do, is that the kind of stuff also that you will be including here is? What are some of these, because you mentioned ADUs in your update and you showed a whole bunch of little legislative references. Is that the kind of stuff you'll be updating and then you'll be helping us understand where. We're going to struggle with those or are struggling with them and how we can get around that?
Yeah, yeah, certainly, I, in every housing element that I've done in the last four years, HCD has wanted to see. An accessory dwelling unit, so speaking to the the example that you gave, an accessory dwelling unit program. Those programs can vary widely, they can be pre approved plans like you're talking about, it could be. Community engagement about the topic, or it could be steps to get the the staff up to. Being able to to do some of those things, so if you want to put that in place, but you don't have the staffing to do. That review in the quickly, in that quick a time, what can we do to work towards that if that's the the county's goal?
I would just add that the zoning code update that we're doing. In parallel with this, we'll be addressing those ADU provisions as well from a processing standpoint. It is, it it is required today, whether you have that, have modified your zoning code. Or your housing element or not, it's in place, and in fact, a couple of. Our client jurisdictions have just referred to the state law and said. And not codify that locally and just said, we'll comply with whatever the state says. Which, among other things, is what you just described, which is a sixty day permit review requirement.
Okay, and I I did think of one other thing, I don't know if this falls into this area or not, because. It's a twist, but I was recently on a webinar focused on low impact camping. Which organization like Hip Camp was the particular booking, it'd be like an Airbnb, but for camping. But Hip Camp and they were working with counties in California and across the country to implement ordinances that. Provide direct manage the private properties. Allowing for camping on their properties to provide more ways for people to come in on more of a visiting tourism standpoint. Does that fall into this at all, or is that outside of quote housing because it's not a permanent housing?
Um, I would, I would say that we we might want to comment on it and provide some, you know, a little analysis on it if it's providing. Opportunities for people long term who are experiencing homelessness. If it really is tourism based and and geared at tourists and folks on vacation. Then the housing element wouldn't really be be the the vehicle to discuss that.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
I have a comment.
What, we're not taking comments?
I understand that, but you have already passed the county code where you cannot have camping or tenting on your private property. It's it's against county code.
Bella, you've been waiting, I understand?
Yeah, I I I think I waited a good amount and you got to most of what I was going to already reference, but I just wanted to echo that, you know, Cody and I. Are very eager to help with housing initiatives, it just comes down to time. And I think our biggest strength is when we go through the programs and see what it, how feasible. It actually is to implement each of those, in the past, I think that those have been. Passed fairly quickly without like a a full deep analysis, and I think that's where we can figure out how we can help people and how. We can really analyze what resources we need in order to do the proper outreach and public assistance that is required. And then I would also echo that there's a lot of invisible reporting that comes along with this, so we want to make sure. That if we're considering like an analysis of the resources in order to have a. Helpful housing programs, then. I would act like, I would encourage discussion about the various state reporting that's required, because even today, I'm. Being required to correct a report from four years ago. So there's, you know, little things have come up that I just want to bring up, but I think you guys talked about everything. Looking forward to it.
Thank you. And you said something else?
I do have one more question and it's more of a question. When you talked about the affirmatively furthering Fair Housing Act. And in your presentation, it shows twenty seventeen after that, so. Is that something that took effect in twenty seventeen and if it did, was it addressed in our past housing element that was passed in twenty nineteen, I believe?
Great question, the legislation was passed in twenty seventeen. But the requirements to do the analysis are so large that it took HCD. Almost two years to come up with guidance on how to do it and they're constantly revising it, so in the previous housing element, it was. It was mentioned and discussed, but there was no guidance on how to do that section yet. And so jurisdictions were allowed to discuss it however they wanted to. And then HCD would review that and make asks kind of on the fly during the review. Now there is a a whole guidance document that tells you all the things you need to do. And there are data sources that HCD has now made available, so while it was discussed very quickly in the previous housing element. It will be analyzed in depth in this housing.
Okay. All right, anybody else? Thank you, Ryan and Jim, we appreciate the update and look forward to the work that you're going to do on our behalf.
Thank you for having us.
We'll now go into public comment, this time is for information from the public on matters not appearing on this agenda or within the consent calendar. All comments are limited to three minutes and must pertain to matters within the jurisdiction of this board. When addressing the board, please state your name for the record and address the board as a whole through the chair. No action or discussion will be conducted on matters not listed on the agenda. However, the chair may refer the subject matter to the appropriate department for follow up. Or schedule the matter on a subsequent board agenda. So we will now open for public comment in the room. Not today, how about online?
Matt?
Hello, Chair and Board, I had a comment to make concerning the housing presentation. If this is the wrong time to say something, I won't say anything.
I appreciate you checking, Matt, why don't you go ahead?
So I just have one suggestion that has been said before. So concerning like housing and the rentals, at least with the North Lake area. It's like impossible to find a rental, there's, I mean. There's, I mean, basically anywhere in Trinity County, a lot of our workers have to rent houses in Redding. But for North Lake in particular, the vast majority of our homes are Airbnbs and they're all vacant. And Tahoe, for example, has made moratoriums, maybe that's the wrong word, but like a cap on the amount of Airbnbs allowed. I just, I don't know if that's something that can be humored in any way, or it can be a part of the housing element, but it's like, I feel like that's a really big struggle that we have in this county, that there are homes here. But everybody just lists them on Airbnb and then you have no, there's nowhere for anybody to rent, you know? It seems like even people that work in county government, some of them are renting homes in Redding. But that's my only comment. And then just to clarify that the guy that said that we can't camp on our property, I believe the ordinance states, and correct me if I'm wrong, that there's a time limit that we can camp on our properties for like 60 days out of the year. I may be wrong, but thank you for your time. I appreciate you guys.
Thank you, Matt.
Veronica?
Good morning, Supervisors. Veronica Kelly Albees with the Weaverville Douglas City Parks and Recreation District. We just, I just wanted to give you a quick update on some happenings within our purview, which is LeFong Park is open for the season and available for rentals for your events. We've had some of the most amazing weddings, birthday parties and musical events. And the public can visit our website at www.wdcparksrec.com and go through that system that we have there. We'll be adding four fitness stations that have been ordered and will be placed along our renovated walking, running trail. Our engineering plan is complete for our sand volleyball court and plan on first RFP going out within 30 days. Sand is proving to be one of the biggest hurdles. That is really expensive. We are talking with potential partners to help with this portion of the project. We are in the design phase of a seasonal cover for the amphitheater stage area and look forward to adding that to the overall improvements at LeFong Park as well. And if you haven't been to LeFong Park lately, I encourage everyone to take a visit. It is not the park of old. It is re-energized and well-maintained. We also have an active disc golf course that is fun and competitive. And we want to thank our local core group of disc golfers that volunteer and partner with us to offer this to the community. We have just finished a successful youth basketball season and our coed adult volleyball league starts April 22nd. Registration is now open. You can go to our website. We always look for opportunities to offer to our community members. While we are special district with Weaverville and Douglas City borders, we love to partner with other areas within Trinity County when possible to create opportunities for as many Trinity residents as possible. We are beginning our interviews for the 2024 Loudoun Park Pool lifeguard team and junior lifeguard team. We are adding more shade to the deck area around the pool to enhance the safety and fun. Swim lesson registration will be open at the beginning of May and people can buy their passes at that time as well. All can be done online or at our office as personal assistance is important to us, customer service. The pool itself will open for the summer season on June 17th and our annual free community pool party will be held on June 5th. And we wanted to thank you and all of our volunteers and the community support because without all of you, we would not be able to serve our community youth and all residents. We are a very small special district. We have three employees that are seasonal, are part-time, and we're getting ready to bring on so many great team members for our lifeguard and junior lifeguard staff. And we're proud to be a part of helping our area youth create the, their work experience and become very professional and really help our community. So just wanted to give you a little update on some things that are happening as we jump into this lovely spring weather. And I hope you all will come visit LeFong Park, come to the pool and we'll see you guys soon. Thanks.
Thank you. Veronica, was that June 17th that the pool opens?
Yes, June 17th. It opens for the summer season.
Thank you.
Any other questions I can answer?
Nope.
Okay, great.
I have no other raised hands.
Okay. Thank you. We will move on to reports and announcements. Next up is to report from department heads. Do we have any, anyone in the room, any online?
I have no raised hands.
Reports from our CAO.
Thank you, Chair. I've got a couple items. The first one, I want to, one, thank, thank the board for approving our housing consultant contract that was adopted during the last Board of Supervisors meeting. We had the initial kickoff meeting with them yesterday and they took a little orientation around town and they're completing that orientation today. The focus of this effort is for temporary housing options for HHS and BHS clients and /or county residents who meet specific state guidelines. The county is exploring options to meet our obligations under state programs and using some of the state provided funds that are being used to enlist the help of housing tools, the expert in this field. There'll be more information to come on this, but we're excited to have them as a, a part of our team to, as we explore different options. And again, this is a very different consultant and a very different aspect of housing than we just heard about with the housing element update. This is some very detailed kind of boots on the ground. How do we get a project implemented type of concept? Not a, not a big theory plan type of concept. And I also just want to make everybody aware that our annual audit is taking place in the next two weeks, which will provide the county the framework to close our financial books from last fiscal year and then complete the associated actions to actually closing out that fiscal year. So I give a little love to our auditor's office and a little more patience than normal as they will have some extra visitors overlooking their shoulders. And I'm sure those results will be fine, but there's just a lot of extra work and a lot of extra reporting that's going on right now. And then I am happy to announce that our solid waste department division has teamed up with, with Caltrans and there's going to be a free general waste household dump day at the Hayfork Transfer Station and the Weaverville Transfer Station on April 20th from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Diane just sent this information out. It's going to be published on the web, different webpages, different social media sites. But again, this is a free event for household general waste. This is not for any hazardous waste, you know, any appliances, furniture, construction debris, tires. This is just general household waste. And there's two cubic yards per household that will be allowed to be dumped for free. Again, that's at Hayfork and Weaverville on April 20th at 9:00 AM and 2:00 PM or 9:00 AM through 2:00 PM. And there will be more information posted on the various social media sites and, and internet webpages. And that is all I've got from, for right now. You'll hear a little bit more from me later.
Thank you. Trent, just one thing I, I know as people have heard a little bit about this more temporary housing project kickoff, that as with what we just heard here, there is going to be multiple opportunities for public engagement, because I know it's like, you know, people have a lot of opinions on this one as well. And so I do remember reading through materials, but if you just highlight that?
Yeah, we, as we develop options, that there will be various forms of, of public engagement via, via workshops. And, you know, those, those projects would then also be brought forward to the planning commission and potentially the board, but probably just the planning commission. And that's another form of public engagement. So that, yes, there will be multiple opportunities for that. You know, we are definitely not at that stage yet. You know, we have just been talking conceptually about some ideas and some concepts and working through some of the legalities and some of the, the, you know, planning and ordinance aspects of, of potential projects. There is private, most often there will be some level of, of private ownership involved with this. So, you know, there's, there's lots of different aspects of it and these things just take a lot of time to get put into place. But with somebody like, you know, housing tools onboard with us who have been doing this effort in the North State rural area since 2012, and they're also tied into some of the existing forums that we do have representation on through HHS already. So, you know, this is not something new to them. It's relatively, it's newer to us, but they've been doing this literally when they put up the map yesterday around every county that surrounds us. So they're happy to help Trinity as well, and they partner with a lot of nonprofits and others. So as we develop this, this concept and these ideas, again, for the requirements to provide, you know, temporary transient type housing to some very specific clientele-based individuals that we have here in the county, you know, we will present those options to the public and they'll have be numerous opportunities for public engagement and input. And that will be welcome and wanted.
Great, thank you, sir. Okay, I will move on to updates from the supervisors and we'll start with Liam.
Okay. On the 21st of last month, we held, I held my first town hall meeting in Hayfork. It was well-attended. A broad range of folks were there from probably 20 years old to over 80 years old. It brought about a lot of thought-provoking questions. It was good to see that many people in attendance. And one of the things I did mention, there is, because of the vote being so close in District Three, I think there's a, a big divide between the people there. You know, the vote was basically 50/50. I came out ahead just by a little bit. So we're going to continue these town hall meetings in Hayfork. We'll have another one probably in about three weeks. And, you know, the goal is to, to bring up the issues that we have in, in Hayfork District Three and try to bring the community together a little bit more. This community needs to kind of join hands again as it used to. And I guess my goal over the next four years will try to get that to happen. So it was, it was, it was a good meeting. I thank everybody that showed up there and we will continue on and I appreciate everybody that did show up there. I also went to a oral health advisory meeting last week, which deals with child oral health care. The, the big topic there is the, the bus or van, that will be a mobile van that will travel to all the schools and offer dental care for free, fluoride, cleaning, hardening, of, of adding hardening to teeth so they don't get cavities as much and how to kind of break that cycle of parents not getting good oral health and it being passed down to their children. And, you know, Trinity County does lead the way in bad oral health. So we're, we're giving it our best on, on that end. It's a big task, but we've got great people in this county working on it. Also, on the ninth of this month, we have the community plan in Hayfork, 5:30 at the dining hall. It is a very, very important meeting to go to. It is the vision for the next couple decades for District Three. It is, I guess you envision it as this, if you woke up 20 years from now, what would you like Hayfork to look like? And these meetings are very important. There'll be more, but this is the, the beginning of them. And I feel that if you need change, want change, or see something that needs to be changed in Hayfork, that you show up and participate. I also had a two-day TMC meeting in Weaverville, was attended by myself, Supervisor Harris and Patrick Flynn. And we had a couple of things to decide there, to decision matters. One of them was the limiting factors analysis on why we're not getting back spring Chinook into the, or Chinook salmon into the trendy river as we would like to. We had three options there, one, two, and three. Number one was pretty vanilla, we'll say, just a, just an oversight. Two was a little bit more stringent and three was the most analysis that you could do. So when we had the choice to pick, if you picked one, you just got one. If you picked two, you got two and one. And if you picked three, you got three, two and one, just more stringent limiting factors analysis study. So we picked three. So over next year or two, three, we are going to go over the, the factors of why we're not getting back the, the king salmon that we should into the trendy river. The other thing that we voted on was the current flow schedule for this year. We are, we are solidly in the wet year scenario of the five years, of the five categories from critically dry, dry, normal, wet and extremely wet. We are in the wet year. There was a hydrograph put together that was the rod hydrograph, the directed decision hydrograph, and then the Hoopa Valley put together, actually, we looked back to 2017, I think it was, for the Hoopa Valley wet year hydrograph, which is pretty close to the rod hydrograph. We voted on it and it did not pass. We had four yeas, four yeses and four extensions. So we are kind of waiting to see what, what the hydrograph will look like here and we, and we should know pretty soon, but it will be a wet water year hydrograph.
So Liam, just the, the very wet year part wasn't up for debate. It was whether it was the hydrograph showing what the releases would look like?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And they were, they were very similar. I, I was shocked honestly that, that one of them wasn't chosen. So I guess we'll go back to the drawing board and try to figure out what the hydrograph will look like, or maybe just drop back to the rod assigned hydrograph for wet year. But either way, there's, there's a little bit more work to be done there. And I'd really like to thank Patrick Flynn for doing all the help, giving me all the help that he can. He's doing a great job and, and I appreciate it.
So I was going to ask you a question about that meeting. It's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, this is the first year that the TMC has not handed a recommendation to the Bureau of Reclamation on what those releases will look like. Is that correct?
Yes. So prior to this year, if you fell into one of those five categories from extremely dry to wet, or critically dry to extremely wet, you automatically got this hydrograph. And there were five different hydrographs or five different stages of water year. So in the discussion between the winter variable flows, which I think Trinity County is now going to just call variable flows, because we have a little bit of a different concept now on how the flow schedule should be, whatever of those five categories we fell into, there, you can look up in the rod and said, you gotta do this, these are the days it's going to be and it's going to be, it's an exact thing. And in the 20 odd years, I guess, 18, 20 years, that's how it was done. We will still be using the same volume of water this year that's in the wet water year hydrograph. We're just having a little bit of problems on figuring out how to disperse that water at what time, what time of the year. So yes, you're right. It, it was the first time that I think we not only didn't pass it, but we didn't pass it unanimously. It was four yeas and four extensions, which is very shocking. So back we go to the drawing board and again, we made it perfectly clear that Trinity County wants to help as much as possible in the variable flows and hydrograph for this year. We are very willing to, to join hands and try to get this thing done. It's very important and it needs to be, it needs to be finished. So we are, we're working at it.
I'm sorry, Liam, just wanted to follow up on that. So I know those releases would be starting soon. So are we, is TMC meeting again before that starts? Or are we just going to now that the Bureau is going to decide what they want to do because they don't have a recommendation from the TMC?
That's a good question. So the next TMC meeting, these are two-day, full-day meetings. The next one will be for three months. So it will be, I decided prior to that, we do have a TMC call every month, which is about a week or two from now. And I, I guess I would ask Trent, where do you think we stand on that flow?
It's, it's my opinion that we will see a typical rod wet year flow schedule be released within the next two weeks-ish and probably by the third week of April, we will start to see river flows increase in accordance with. in accordance with the typical wet water year designation. Bureau of Reclamation will make that independent recommendation, if you will, to Department of, Department of Interior, and they will implement that as they have in the past twenty odd years.
Yeah, I guess the difference is they've always, as I understand it, they've always just approved what the TMC endorsed. And now they don't have anything that was endorsed to approve, so they'll just do their own thing. Am I too loose in that?
I, I, I think mechanically, that's correct practically. What has been endorsed in the past is exactly the rod hydrographs. So it's, it's really not that much of a change. Last year, there was a somewhat of a, of a different unique, if you will, hydrograph as it had two peak flows versus one. But I, I don't see a big difference between what we will see going down the river to accommodate the rod mandated flows versus what we've seen in any other wet water year in the past.
Thank you.
And I, and I think some of the, the problem with us not coming to consensus is that the Trinity River Restoration Program feels that the rod flow is not the best available science right now. Which is, you know, which they've said for twenty years, everything they were going to do is the best available science. And here we are looking at another. I hate to break for any of you guys out there, fisher people, we will probably be not having a salmon season again this year. So, you know, best available science, you know, we've been restored to a zero fishery again for two years in a row. So I'm not sure what best available science is. So we're going to probably drop back like Trent said to the rod and get back to the drawing board with Trinity County trying to instill the best flows on the Trinity River while accommodating the most fishing days we can for the economy of Trinity County.
Thank you, sir, for the interruptions.
So it's a big, it's a, it's a big lift. It's at TMC is a, it's a tough meeting. It's a tough all day meetings and we're doing the best we can. And I think we're getting into some new ground and it's good to see that we are open to variation that it never was before. And we just have to, I guess the hurdle that we're trying to get over is the Trinity River Restoration Program has to look at just fish. And as a county, you know, as a primary and TMC, I have to look at fish, economics, power generation, lake levels, multitude of things that Trinity River Restoration does not have to look at. On a high note, the lake is going to be almost full this year. I think we'll hit the eighty-five to ninety percent mark. I think we'll hit two point one, two point two million acre feet, which is unbelievable from where we were a couple of years back. We were at twenty percent, maybe five hundred thousand acre feet. So that is a big plus and it's a, a good place for us to start as a county. We were trying to figure out a way to, to to bank water over the years, starting out low and trying to bank it to get it to where it is. Now I think we have a little bit easier job since it's kind of banked up to where we wanted it to be. I think we'll be able to do a better job of keeping it up in the range that we like. So we don't lose the cold water pool. And, you know, kill a lot of fish in the river and the hatchery. So that's a very positive thing. We're very lucky to have the last two winters that we did. And it was, it was needed. Mother Nature took care of us. Thank goodness. So onward and forward.
Anything else?
You're going to hit the Community Development Works up.
Yeah.
Okay. That should be it for me.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris.
Hello. Thank you. I just would like to report out that I've been working alongside Supervisor Gogan with the North Coast Resource Partnership Group, planning the meeting that will be hosted here in Weaverville on April twenty sixth. And then also I attended via Zoom, the NACO Rule Action Caucus and received a presentation on Amazon's efforts to put satellites in the, in orbit to provide another version of, I'm sorry, of high quality Wi-Fi, similar to that of Starlink, to help boost Wi-Fi availability in rural communities and also provide the opportunity for cell boosting through that Wi-Fi availability. Since it doesn't seem to just be a Trinity County issue, that landlines are failing kind of across rural counties everywhere, it seems. And just the ability for folks to gain, to have access to, to the internet is still a continuing challenge, not just in our county, but in other rural counties around the nation. I, as Supervisor Gogan mentioned, I attended via Zoom the TMC meetings and then had to bounce off one of the, towards the end of the second day in order to jump on with the workforce development program through the California Resource Conservation and Development Council Association efforts to develop workforces for conservation in rural communities. So that, that's always a good effort to hear, or a good effort to be part of. And then also just to kind of look at how we can better home grow some of the folks who are going to stay in our communities. And as we mentioned before, because housing and some of the challenges of just living remotely, if they're kind of born into the professional, then it's a little easier for them to adapt to living the way that, that we do. But outside of that, just spending time with the constituency, fielding a lot of community concerns around the same things. I'm sure y'all hear about the roads because of the really wet winter and homeowners insurance problems are plaguing people. It is reaching a precipice now that we are, I would say, we thought we were in a crisis, but we're getting, we're getting closer. My homeowner's policy increased to fourteen thousand dollars a year this year. I do own, I do have two properties, but it now is greater than one of my mortgages. So I'm, I'm, I know I'm not alone and I know that it's something that we're concerned about. And hopefully as an organization through CSAC and RCRC and federal pressure perhaps, we have got to do something different. People are truly at the place where they physically cannot reduce anymore in their budgets. And then the, the hardships of trying to provide the demanded and required homeowners insurance that we have to carry is just getting more and more intense. Outside of that, everything seems to be moving along. Any questions or concerns or?
You know, I just talked about limiting factors for salmon, but I think that the fire insurance is a huge limiting factor for moving to Trinity County. You know, your, your fire insurance could be more than your mortgage. And I think it torches a lot of people from coming here, that the fire insurance is just outrageous here, Cal. The Cal Fair Plan does not seem to be that Cal fair. And I, I see it as being one of the biggest obstacles for people to move to Trinity County. There's a lack of, if you have a mortgage, you have to have fire insurance and that fire insurance. And again, the Cal Fair Plan fire insurance only covers fire or explosion, doesn't cover vandalism, any other thing besides fire and explosions. So that, that policy is, is just one policy. Then you have to have your regular policy for your home. And it can be very expensive. And I think it is a detriment to Trinity County and probably a lot of counties getting people to move in.
I would like to encourage, I mentioned this at, at the PBA meeting in Junction City, and I just want to reiterate that folks, if you have done your fire hardening of your home and you've made those improvements and you have done adequate fuels reduction around your home, that meets your Fire Safe Council and, and Firewise community recommendations, to please make sure that you go on the website and fill out the, the opportunity for a reduction in your fare because you have accomplished those tasks. I, I did get that this year. But it, it does help. It's a tiny, it's a tiny percentage break, but it does, it does help. And I just want to make sure that the community is taking advantage of that opportunity if you have done that hard work to make your home firewise.
And Supervisor Carpenter Harris, the only thing I was going to ask or add on there was I've been thinking about inviting someone to come speak to us from, that's been working on this insurance at the state level. Is that something that you would like to arrange or would you like me to arrange that?
I would be willing to support you in the arrangement process. We can do it as a team. Just, I, I think it would be, I think it's one of the things that's vexing to myself and to others is, is how is this even possible? Like, how is it possible that we are all, not all, but many of us are being funneled into a single that is a for-profit business, by the way. It's, it's not something that is, you know, out of the kindness of their hearts. And we're all being funneled into this, into this single location for insurance. I just find that oddly strange that that's where we're at and then that our rates are what they are. It would be a good thing, I think, for us to learn more about what's going on.
Thank you. All right, Supervisor Frazier.
Right. Well, let's see, start out with on the twenty first, I believe, yes, March twenty first, had a North Coast Unified Air Quality Management District Board Meeting in Eureka. The biggest portion of the discussion that day was about Humboldt Redwood Company's biomass Cogen plant in Scotia. I don't know that, that is probably not a major topic of discussion in Trinity County, but it is in Humboldt right now. So, and if anybody wants any more information about that, that's listening, they can call me. I'm not going to go into that in detail here because it was actually a fairly long and in-depth conversation. So, but I can, I can answer questions if people have them, or I can give them contact information for somebody that really can. After that, on March twenty seventh, I attended a Calusa Glen Trinity Community Action Partnership Meeting in Willows. Yeah, Willows this time. So once again, Trinity County lacking some folks there. Liam wasn't there again. And this time also Sheri White wasn't able to attend. So of our six members from Trinity County, it was only myself and why can't I remember his name? The housing guy, Jesse, Jesse Ferguson, we're, we were the only two members from Trinity County. So that's something that we need to address in the future. Is that, that it's an eighteen member board. And if Trinity County only has two members present, we're not fully represented. So beyond that, I don't think I have a lot to report out. I'll keep it simple. I just attended those two, two out of county meetings and other commissions I don't believe met in the past two weeks.
Thank you, sir.
Supervisor Cox. I guess one other thing, and this would be, you might have this information also, there was a meeting scheduled today for the crisis, the Emergency Crisis Response Stakeholders Group, but it has been changed to May second, I believe.
When they realized they had conflict with the board meeting, they decided to reschedule, which was nice. Thank you.
Yes.
All right, Supervisor Cox.
I met with, this isn't really reporting, it's out of county travel. I just did this because I wanted to do this. Met with Donna Stone. She is the NorCal EMS Executive Director. And we did discuss this partnering I had shared before of some of the executive board members in response to Brooke and Sminger's initiation of potentially looking to establish emergency services as a how do you say it? And it's a simple word, an essential service. Nine other states have done this and California hasn't. But after further investigation, there can be some unintended consequences from such a endeavor, you know, being successful. So kind of stepping back and taking a bigger look at that. So good discussion. I will be at the NorCal Annual Conference on April twentieth. That is a, I'm excited to see what that is. It certainly will be recognizing some of our emergency workers and the contributions that they do make and awards that will be presented to them will also be an opportunity for continuing ed units for those in that field. I did, I don't know if Supervisor Frazier wanted to share out about any of this, but just to let the board know that we did take the action step. I set up the meeting with Arthur Wyleen, the RCRC General Counsel regarding the representation, you know, perhaps looking at how that works and how it might work differently in the future. Supervisor Frazier wanted to consider. So if you want to speak out about that.
I don't know. I don't know if I'm prepared to, yeah, I'm, I don't know if I'm prepared to share a lot about that right now. It's a, I can share a little bit. We did meet, we had a good conversation with Arthur Wyleen. There are issues there that were unforeseen by me when we, when I started this. It's something that I still think needs to be pursued. And I'm still going to talk to some, some other supervisors. But it's going to be a long term thing because as, as we stand right now, not only does it have to get past the voters of California, which would be a hurdle, it also has been, there is a Supreme Court ruling against this in nineteen sixty-two. So there's two hurdles and one hurdle's one thing, but two hurdles is a long term project. So I do, I think it's still the correct, a correct method going forward, but it's going to be something that I'm going to try to pass off to a county supervisor that is really excited about it from, I'm, I'm going to reach out to some of the ones from the RCRC list that Supervisor Cox has given me. Arthur did give us some ideas on counties that would probably be excited to try it and that have a little bit more time and resource than Trinity County.
Fifty-eight, how many are aboard now?
How many are aboard or? I haven't, I haven't talked specifically with supervisors.
How many are not aboard? How many need to?
I have no idea. I, I haven't, I haven't got into that in-depth conversation. I, I would assume that it would be something that would have to be hammered out at the county level between the counties. But it, it's something that I'm going to continue to work on. I don't expect it to happen in the near future. It's going to have to be a long-term commitment to get there.
So moving forward, just a report up from the Fire Safe Council meeting. I would just encourage residents to take a peek at the Trinity County RCD website. You will find some information there on address signs that can be made available for people who need them. And you'll find that information there or reach out to the RCD directly, but just know that's a resource there for you. And then I do want to just give a shout out to the Garden Club, have those ladies and maybe some gentlemen that work with them as well. They do a really beautiful job of just voluntarily improving the beautification of our town and our flower beds and so forth. And just of recent, even when you walk into the library, two weeks ago, Elvira Palmer and Brooke Miller put in substantial time and effort to get rid of weeds and really expose the beautiful flowers that are there and coming up. So you know, these kinds of things is just one area that people do and give up their time so freely. And I just feel that that is worthy of a little attention. So thank you to them. And that's. And I just feel that that is worthy of a little attention. So thank you to them and that's the end of my report.
Great, thank you. Okay, for my district, I did mention earlier the Community Development Workshop. This is on April 23rd at the Veterans Memorial Hall. It'll be between 5:30 and 7:30 PM. We will have some pizza there just so that since it's over dinner time, people will be able to attend throughout and not be starving. And as I checked this morning before I came to the meeting, there were 48 people who had registered either to attend or shown that they were interested in attending. So it looks like we'll have a good turnout for that. Our focus, we'll bring everybody together, then there'll be four small group breakouts. One is on housing, one is on tourism development. So this is more the assets that bring people here for tourism. And then there's marketing. And then last one is workforce and economic development. And those small groups will then work and then come back and report to the larger group. I've already, already had confirmation from a number of different outside entities that want to come and join us. The folks from GoBiz, California GoBiz, that support economic development, our, our regional economic development people, the workforce center people. So I think we're going to have some good support here for that and I hope we have a good turnout. And our, our, our whole goal is to try to get some alignment and shared information and then build on the momentum that's already there for some areas and, and that needs to be built for others. So I look forward to that.
What was the date on that again, Rick?
April 23rd. It's a Tuesday evening, I believe, and 5:30 to 7:30 at the Veterans Memorial Hall. And then, I already mentioned the water-based recreation update from Sarah Acreage. She is basically Tara's peer managing the water-related issues that have, take place here in Trinity County. So she's been very helpful in trying to address some of those concerns that have been being raised. And final thing is, I wanted to mention that the last opportunity for public input at the Public Utilities Commission about the AT&amp;T carrier blast resort took place in the last couple of weeks. I think the newspaper covered some of that as well, but I think at that time they were reporting, there'd been 5,000 comments submitted. Some of are in support, but the vast, vast majority were in opposition to AT&amp;T's request. And so I just was able to offer a brief, I think we had one-minute update. And it, it was a little awkward that here I need to cut people off at three minutes and I went over the one minute and then I was admonished. So I, I understand how it feels on the other end. Okay, that's it for my update. Let's take a 10, a 12-minute break. We'll be back at 10:55.
You might want to let people know since you said that there were.
I guess we do. Thank you for that reminder. Okay, we will come back to order. Supervisor Carpenter Harris was kind enough to remind me that we took a break before the ad hoc reports. I gather that for the tribal relations, we do not have an update this time. And for cannabis ordinance, when we met the last time, we were discussing the prioritization that we had done before, where we had kind of collectively come up with a list of priorities so that if we were taking the ordinance update for cannabis in piece parts to try to get to some more urgent items sooner rather than later, what would those priorities be? But we were also looking at to say, do we want to continue down that path or do we want to just dig in and get it done? And so the outcome of that was dig in and get it done. And so we have a schedule that is laid out for us that takes us through coming up with a, a second version that we would bring back to public workshops and then Planning Commission and Board and all that kind of stuff with a goal of this fall being done with the process. So I just wanted to give that general update and Supervisor Frazier, CAO Tuthill, if you have anything to add to that or clarify?
I think our anticipated completion is more late calendar year versus fall.
Oh, wow. I figured fall goes to December 21st, so.
As long as we're two.
Yes, that, that, thank you for that clarification. People have different views of when fall is.
Trying to set expectations.
Yes, later, later in the year, but before the end of the year. Let's put it that way. Okay, thank you for that clarification. Okay, so we are now to the consent calendar. These items include routine, non-controversial matters and will be acted on by the board by one roll call motion. If a member of the public has any questions or comments on an item on the consent calendar, they may provide them now. A member of the board or staff may request an item be pulled and considered separately. So we'll move to public comment on the consent calendar. None in the room?
I have no raised hands.
Okay. Do any supervisors have an item they wanted to pull from the consent calendar? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move the consent calendar as presented.
Motion and a second.
Supervisor Gergen?
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Chairman Muttweiler?
Aye.
All right. Well, we made up a little time. Under counting matters, these items include non-routine or controversial matters and are listed alphabetically by department. A member of the board, staff or public may request that an item be heard out of order. Did anyone have a request to hear something out of order? Okay. Then under clerk, recorder, assessor, item 4.1, receive information from Trinity County Elections Official on the maps used during the March 2024 election.
Good morning, Chair and Board. I'll start out by saying that the supervisory boundaries adopted in December of 2021 are the same boundaries that were used in the 2022 and the 2024 elections. My elections management system, it's, it's called EMS also for short, so I'll, I'll use that acronym throughout my presentation, is set up by addresses and it's a manual process. Specific precincts are assigned to specific addresses and these precincts would include all districts that have voters eligible to vote on, such as supervisor, special districts or school districts. Because my EMS is set up by address, I hired Daryl Horzlin and RCD, Resource Conservation District, to take the adopted GIS supervisory maps and create a specific address document that includes precincts that coincide with the addresses. And this document was used to update my EMS prior to the 2022 elections. I will add that there was a discrepancy brought to my attention by one voter on Brown's Ranch Road during the 2024 election. This individual believed she was in District Two. This individual believed she was in District 2, but my record showed she was in District 1. So therefore, she got a District 1 ballot. I'm working to verify the specific discrepancies. And since it had no impact on the election, the overall results of this election, I certified the election and submitted it to the Secretary of State in accordance with laws and statutes. Again, close with stating again, the same boundaries were used in 2022 as were in 2024 elections. And I'm open for any questions you may have.
Any questions from supervisors? Okay, then we'll go to public comment. Public comment in the room?
Hi, I'm Patty Hymus. First of all, I want to thank all of you for serving for the county, your time and energy. It's important to us. I just have a couple comments. I'm a proponent of going back to one day voting, paper ballots, and hand counting. I feel that with a proper idea being shown on the day of election would save a lot of time in having to verify the voting ballots. Did you know that your DL, your driver's license, is used to show for over 70 things that you have to apply for? A bank, a hotel, a rental car, but you don't have to show it to vote? I'm concerned with all the illegals coming into our country, that some of these people are going to be infiltrated into our voting system. It just came out on the web that in Chicago, on the 24th, they just found over 10,000 ballots that have not been counted yet. And I truly believe if the board took a poll of the voters in Trinity County, that they would like to go back to in favor of one day voting, showing their IDs, going back to paper ballots, and not using the voting machines, doing hand counting. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, Ms. White brought up the precincts. I think that's something we need to discuss here. You have to remember that the, you are the election board and you appoint her in her position. She is not elected in that position. She can be replaced anytime you want to replace her. Just got to remember that. Okay, in 2024, we had North County mail-in ballot precinct. We had Lewiston poll. We had a Weaverville mail-in ballot precinct. We had a Weaverville poll. We had DC and Hayfork mail-in ballots. We had a Hayfork poll. We had a Junction City poll, and we had South County mail-in ballot precinct. Okay, so that's eight precincts for this election. 2022, we had, in addition to those, we had a Lewiston mail-in ballots, East Weaver, Douglas City, Weaver Bali, Oregon Mountain, East Hayfork, Big Bar, Downriver, West Hayfork, and Heimpong. So in this election, we had 20, we had 40 pages in the precinct count. And in 2022, we had 128 pages. So my question is, where did Downriver mail-in ballots get processed? Because she does not have a Downriver mail-in ballots. So I mean, I'm just curious in how we went from, well, we had 24 precincts. Then we went to 18, and now we only have eight. So I mean, there's some questions that need to be answered.
Thank you. Any other public comments in the room?
I have no raised hand.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to add?
I could add a little bit to clarify something. Prior to our redistricting, we had 25 precincts. We now have more than that, but we do consolidations. So when a voter with like-voting races is all the same, they're consolidated with a specific precinct. There's where the naming comes from. Because as John had mentioned, there were more in '22 than there were in '24. That doesn't mean that the precinct boundaries had changed. It just means that the consolidations had changed. So therefore, if you're able to vote on a specific race, and it's typically when it comes to special districts or like in the 24 supervisory districts, you consolidate them down. And that's nothing new to Trinity County. It's statewide.
So for clarity, Shannon, my understanding is this was a fairly simple election. People really were just voting on three supervisory seats. And there wasn't really anything else on the ballot. And so that consolidation that you did, because it was relatively simple compared to other ballots, saves the county money, correct?
I would never say that any election is simple, so I'll just clarify that part of it. But in some of your statements, that is true. So District, a lot of District 4 and District 5 were, I'm sorry, District 1 and District 4 were included together in a consolidation because there was nothing different than the voters in those precincts would have voted on. District 2, they had differences, and there were two different consolidated precincts for District 2. And same with District 1, because there is a polling place within Weaverville area. So that's why you would see two different consolidations for District 2, because some voters go to the Weaverville polling place here at the Veterans Hall, and some are mail-ballot-only precincts, so they would get their ballot in the mail.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Thank you.
And then there was the one particular question raised there about the Downriver mail-in ballots. So in your consolidation, where would those have ended up?
So Rick, those ended up in the North County. The naming that I chose was probably not very good. But the District 4 ended up with the District 1 that was called North County. Because there were no supervisory races in either one of those.
Did you have a question?
I just wanted to thank you for doing a great job. I was in a very close race. And not for one second did I think there was any tampering. I think you guys did a great job. I think it was fair. Don't want to speak for the rest of the board, but I think they also think that you did a good job. So thank you very much, and keep up the good work.
Anyone else?
I just have a quick question. When, when those consolidations occur, like District 4 and, was it District 4 and District 1? When those consolidations occur, I just, one, I'm just curious to know, how then are we able to separate data for trends, if you will, in, in those different districts? I don't know how to, I'm probably not going to say this correctly, but it's just, I feel like it would be, it's interesting for, for me. And then it's also interesting, I'm sure, for other folks who are running for offices to be able to look at what districts kind of hold specific trends, whether they're along party lines or whether they're along interest lines, if you will. When those consolidations occur, is there any way to go back into that and tease out that information? Or once it's compiled, it's compiled?
There's not a way to go back because it's compiled that way. But I will take it into consideration for future consolidations.
Yeah, it just seems to me that there's, there's information in the way that the districts vote and information in the, what matters to them may be very different than what matters to, to someone in a district as even geologically as different as District 1. So thank you for that. It was just a curiosity.
Yeah, and maybe you can help me just, I want to understand what drives, like, what guides you to say, I want, one, do consolidation? It's probably just straightforward, but I'll ask anyway. And then, two, how you choose to consolidate?
So consolidations are done basically for ballots, right? So that I don't have to create multiple ballots, therefore costing the county more dollars, to create different ballot styles for all these different precincts. So that's why consolidated precincts are created. Because if you're a voter, whether you're in Precinct 1 or Precinct 3, that has the same races on your ballot, it simplifies the, the expenses and the duties to consolidate those into one. And so that's how those decisions are made, Rick. And, and once again, I probably did poor naming of those consolidated precincts. And I'll take Heidi's comments into consideration next time I'm consolidating, because I will continue to consolidate precincts. But I'll take Heidi's comments into consideration on, on how I choose to do those consolidations.
Thank you.
Well, I don't know if it's, this is not exactly how this is agendized, but I, as we're talking about the consolidations, that's something that even South County is now just South County. When I ran in 2020, there were seven or eight precincts in Southern Trinity. It makes it a lot easier as a supervisor. If you can look at those precincts and see how people in your, broke out over your district, because District 5 is an enormous piece of real estate, not as big as it used to be. But to know the difference of how people think and vote in South Hayfork and Cuttenpom and Xenia and Post Mountain is beneficial. And when you look at that 158 pages or whatever it is from 2020, and you can look and say, okay, these people voted this way. These people voted this way. It's a lot harder as a supervisor to represent someone that's just out there. There, there's, there is a lot of difference between South Hayfork, which I represented for two years, and Post Mountain. They're only this far apart on the map, but there's a lot of difference there in voting. And there is no way to know that now.
So once again, I will take into consideration when I'm doing my consolidations. And if there is a supervisory district race or something, a hot topic for the county, I will take that into consideration when I'm doing those consolidations and maybe spread it out into, to areas rather than just consolidating it into one.
Shannon, one more thing, just because now it's making me think. So when you think about the consolidation you've done in the past and done this time, give us, it's really, it's a cost savings thing, because you're, like you said, you have to prepare fewer versions of the ballots, and therefore you're printing more in bulk and all that kind of stuff. Can you ballpark, did it save us 5,000, 10,000?
I can't, Rick, on the spot. I could probably come up with something in the future if you wanted that. But it is definitely a savings to the county to, to make those consolidations. But I do hear the concerns of needing to have more data. And so when I'm, consolidations has only started since 2022, because prior to redistricting, we only had 25 precincts. So we did 25 different ballot types. We mailed 25 different ballots out. So when we came up to 56 or seven precincts now, because of the fact of the way precincting was done with the redistricting, there's 56. So that needed to be consolidated down, and it's what all of my counterparts among California do also.
So I think I missed that earlier. So we went from 25 to 56?
Yes, and don't quote me on the 56. It's 56, 57. It's in the 50s of what total precincts we have.
Would there be another method? And this is vague to me, so I don't. But the reason there's so many precincts is because we changed the supervisory lines, but things like a fire district or a water district stayed where they were. And so when we scooted the supervisory lines, that created more precincts. Am I correct?
That is potentially what, what could happen, because this, the special districts, school districts have their boundaries themselves, and you can't split a district in the middle when a supervisory district line goes through that middle. So what was created was a precinct for each one of those special districts. Once again, if you're a voter who can vote for the like races in a precinct, that's how precincts are also made, is that same, same way. Is if you're entitled to vote on something, a water district, a school district, a CSD, then that's what, that's how the precincts are created.
So my thought was, but I don't think you could do it. My thought was, well, it could be cleaned up another way, but that would probably cause a whole myriad of other problems. You can't scoot other things to try to clean it up. That would be a laugh-coat nightmare, probably. Okay.
You know, I think the longer you sit there, the longer questions come. I just thought, you know, we've had concerns raised at, at other board meetings as well about just, not in particular how we do things, but just generally election fraud and concerns and how the in-person hand-counting type stuff could be better. Can you just speak to, with your experience running the elections and, and working with other elections officials, the protections that are in place with the method we use and what you feel we would gain or lose in shifting to a manual, same-day, in-person process?
Well, that it is just agendized for the map situation. It's not talking about the entire integrity of the election and the process. So I just wanted to be careful about that. If we're getting into deliberations about changing the system, that's not really before you at this time.
Okay. Another discussion we'll have offline, I guess. Thank you. Thanks, Shannon.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Keep us in line. Okay. Under cannabis, item 4.2, introduce and waive the reading of an ordinance amending Trinity County Code Section 17.43.050 pertaining to commercial cannabis cultivation regulations. No impact to the general fund. Mr. Plubani?
Good morning, Chair Supervisors, Drew Plubani, Cannabis Division Director. I'm going to take you through a little bit of the sort of history and, you know, background as to how we got to this ordinance amendment being presented to you all. It was agendized for the March 19th meeting, and due to the ordinance itself that is being proposed, not being attached to the agenda, it was continued to today's meeting. So in May 2023, we brought an item to you. Essentially, it was titled, "The Resolution of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity Allowing Streamlined Approval of Cannabis Licenses That Require CCVs for the Calendar Year 2023." So the backstory to that is that essentially in sometime in 2022, staff essentially made a change of interpretation to how CCVs were previously measured in terms of the historical practice being measurement from mature canopy to the adjacent residence. And so at that time, with staff's change of interpretation, the additional structures for harvest storage and things like that were also then considered to be included as an element that would need to meet that setback requirement. So that posed a problem in terms of many of the, you know, first several years of the program and CCVs from that timeframe, where the sites were configured specifically to meet a 350-foot property setback requirement from the adjacent legal dwelling to the mature canopy. So in May, the, the board adopted that resolution to allow that essentially those CCV requirement for renewals and for new, essentially pre-existing variances that had been approved. But now, at that time, we're going to require a new CCV be processed because of the change of interpretation. Along with that, there were a number of criteria that were set forth, and I can go through that now or later in discussion, whatever you prefer, but I'll just continue through the sort of backstory. So one of the main things that was included as a result of that resolution, which is Resolution Number 2023-071, was to include noise, light, and odor attenuation plans for projects that did not meet the 350-foot setback requirement. And so following the initial adoption of that resolution, roughly two weeks after that, staff put together a policy memo, which you can find on the county website under Policy Memos and Updates, essentially detailing and giving templates for the attenuation plans that were going to be required, as well as going through sort of what the updated procedure would be to augment the existing appendixy template to include which additional mitigation measures would be applied to those projects that did not meet the 350-foot setback requirement, as well as sort of just how to do the attenuation plans. So basically, that, that went forward for much of calendar year 2023. So basically that that went forward for much of calendar year 2023. And then recognizing that we were approaching the end of the calendar year. I think the original intent was that the second draft of the cannabis ordinance would have been completed during 2023. So in December, when we realized that that wasn't going to happen and we didn't have a permanent solution. That we proposed in the first draft of the ordinances. I brought back to you an extension on December 19th, which was essentially extended through February 2024. With the direction given to staff to schedule a discussion slash study session. With the planning commission to go over. The resolution and the extension. So some of what you're you see included as the ordinance today came about. During that discussion slash study session with the planning commission. In discussion with ad hoc. And so. Then on January, so on January 11th, we had the discussion study session. Much of kind of what happened there is included in backup. The the recommendations from that study discussion. Session were to update chapter 17, 43, 050, section A subsection eight to replace the term cultivation with canopy. And to propose that the existing commercial cultivation variance process be converted to. An administrative buffer reduction director's use permit, which is essentially what is in the ordinance before you today. And then on February 6, the board extended resolution 2023, 071 until April 30. Then we took the ordinance to the planning commission and. Essentially, they made some minor revisions, including. Adding the that the requirement that along with the notice of application. For the cannabis division receiving. The application for the director's use permit for the buffer reduction. That the consent opposition letter would be sent out along with the notice of application. And so. Then we brought it back on 319. It was continued to today. So that's that's sort of the backstory. There's obviously a lot of. Working pieces in terms of the nuance of, you know, historically. What was done and what we're proposing here today, but I'm here to answer any technical or clarifying questions you may have.
Okay. Questions in the board? Before we hear public comment? Drew, just the one thing I want to clarify, the the temporary approvals that the board provided before. Were related to renewals and and this is for renewals and new, correct?
Yeah, they were related to, and I could read the criteria if that's helpful, just to refresh everyone's memory.
Why not?
And my own. Yeah, give me a second. I will pull it up. Maybe I shouldn't have offered that. I have it here somewhere. But yeah, essentially there were a number of criteria. It was mainly focused on the renewals. It also captured the new. CCVs on previously approved for previously approved sites that had a CCV. Because of the change of the interpretation, it also captured essentially. Projects that. Were previously configured, previously had a license. And an approved environmental document, but that for whatever reason, you know. During the past, it was missed that they did not meet that setback requirement. So kind of all those things were captured. And then the inclusion of the attenuation plans was kind of like the the main bulk of. The additional requirements as a result of the resolution.
And then and so just with that clarification, thank you, this this does go beyond that to. New without having met those other criteria, correct?
Yes. And so the reason that this, one of the reasons that this goes beyond that is that, you know, as well as sort of. The initial attempt of the resolution or the initial intent of the resolution to address, you know. Those dynamics that I've already referenced without going through them again. Also to sort of move away from. What I would consider to be, and I think, you know. Planning department agrees that it's a bit of a misuse of the term variance. And so rather than going forward utilizing a term that isn't exactly appropriate, especially for preconfigured sites. One of the proposals from mentor Harnish in the first draft of the ordinance was this administrative buffer reduction concept. So that's where sort of the base framework for this ordinance came from. And then with the additions from legal counsel and from ad hoc and planning commission input.
Okay. All right. Thank you. We'll take public comment and then probably have more questions for you. Thank you, sir. We'll open up for public comment.
Good morning, Chair Supervisors, Adrian Keyes from Hayfork. Not really sure I have anything new to say. I support this alteration. I think it's a wonderful approach to. What isn't what is is problematic, but it hasn't reared its head as being problematic so much is that. The existing variances, including the ones prior to Connell's like unilateral. Change in definition. Just don't seem to have a history of generating issues. So that's not really I'm not seeing in the conversations like when we're talking about the opt outs and some contentious projects. Those aren't even necessarily subjected to variances. So I'm I'm hoping that this item will pass as written. And just to to reiterate, I believe the way if there were to be a new application, then the consent deny letter would go out. And if there was any opposition, that would trigger a planning commission hearing. So I believe that they've done a really good job and staff has done a great job of just like. Analyzing what the issues are and putting them into a. A packet essentially that that resolves those issues. It's been a long time coming on this one. We've talked about it quite a bit. Like I said, there's really not much more I can say. The history of the project has been explained. Repeatedly or the program has been explained repeatedly. And and I would really, I would encourage this to pass. I would also encourage. The time and resources that we've spent on this to be put into more. Productive aspects of the cannabis program, like some of the ordinance. Alterations or amendments that haven't happened. Including the finalized enforcement capacities of the. Of the division. So if we have repeat offenders, then they're taken care of. But I don't think we can get to that point if we keep taking one step backwards for everyone forwards. Thank you.
Chair supervisors, Lisa Wright-Lewiston. I'll just echo what Adrian had said and support staff on the decision to move this to an administrative buffer reduction. The reason that, you know, originally the 350, that was kind of just pulled out of the air. There was nothing scientific about that 350 foot setback. There was quite a bit of discussion years ago. And that was kind of the the compromise that was come up with with the distance to the dwelling and and for odor mitigation primarily. So odor mitigation is fully covered in the very expensive EIR that we have paid for and analyzed thoroughly. So that's incorporated into the appendix C analysis. In addition, the odor control plans, noise and light attenuation and so on. So that's already being covered. If someone had an issue that was in a shorter proximity to the cultivation area, they could certainly raise that through a CEQA. Appeal, right? That that wasn't properly notified. But I have been sitting through years and years of planning commission meetings. I say Chair Frazier, supervisor Frazier did as well. And literally on probably two or three times was there really ever an issue where a variance was denied. Right? Because there really isn't that kind of opposition typically in the areas where we have. You had the cultivation concentrations. So I think saving on the time. That staff has taken that the planning commission has absorbed tons of their time when it's already really covered now. And there hasn't been issues. There haven't been issues in the past. Very rarely, right? Out of I don't know how many hundreds of variances I've sat through at planning commission. Like I said, maybe two or three were ever really denied. Additionally, we do have a couple of Flora clients today that are primarily MONG speakers. I did request of staff that in the future that translation services be considered to be provided. The MONG community has a large percentage of the overall. Cannabis permits in Trinity County and our client base, probably a third to a half. I think you'd see something comparable in the program. So I think that would be very beneficial. For the board to provide translation services on cannabis related ordinance items because it's very impactful to them. So both of these clients have been in the system in the process going back, you know, to 2020 or so. Some of the applications that kind of got stalled out with the injunction and so on. And now they're being held up and moving forward and potentially losing another season because of kind of this delay, delay, delay on how we're going to handle. These kind of setback issues. So both of them would like to speak today. Charlie Muah, who is a Flora account manager. And he hasn't done this kind of translation service and our other two have done this more often. They aren't available today, so he's going to be though assisting them. So have patience as we work through this a bit in their public comment. Thank you.
During translation, we move it to six minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning, Chair. So I'm here translating for Bella today. She's been going through this. CCV for the 2023. And months have passed by and she's afraid of losing another season to the CCV. She wants to figure out a resolution so she can actually have a season to provide for her family also. Because she does have a child at home and she wants to know what what will be going on for this coming up season. So these past few seasons, she's done nothing but lost money and she can't really provide for her. Son this coming up season also, if this continues to go on. She doesn't know where she's going to be able to provide, how she's going to be able to provide for her family moving forward. She's not educated, but she does know how to use her arms and feet. So she is a farmer. And all she knows how to do to provide for her family is farm and she wants to be able to do that in this coming up year.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I will be providing translation for Bior here also. So his farm is located on Poker Bar Road. He's gone through the CEQA process and the CCV process, but he's kind of held up on the CCV since November. So he wants to know how long is it going to take and when he's going to see. Anything come through. He wants to know how long the process will take and he last spoke with Bella from the county and. She said we were just still waiting for the CCV, the continuation. And yeah, he just wants to know how long it will be before he's able to get his license fully. So his farm is called Poker Bar Ranch and he wants to know where. His CCV is sitting at now. So he knows the timeframe to to be waiting for that.
Thank you. Any other public comment in the room? Okay, online?
Veronica. Good morning, still Veronica Kelly Alby's Douglas City. I'm happy to see some movement on changing variants to a buffer zone. I attended the public meetings that were designed to gather input and. I think my concern with this right now is I don't see some of the the things that were put out by members of the public. Regarding the buffer zone plan, like putting a timeline on it to revisit. And and make sure everything was working. A lot of people don't know that. They have to complain if there's odor or some other issues that could be mitigated. Because we hear all the time, there are mitigations in the EIR. There are written words about what to do if somebody complains. They are not automatic. And while this applies to the adjacent properties, we all know in a good win day. And I use odor because that is what is the biggest problem, I think, sometimes. Good win day, that public nuisance goes much further. And having the opportunity to review and say, okay, maybe now we need to take this to the next level. So maybe that neighbor is getting that request again or is still, everything's still okay. Because that way you'd get a better idea of what the community, as well as the adjacent neighbors need in terms of mitigation. Measures. But I was disappointed that we were going to be coming back to revisit this with more public meetings. And this was one that we specifically spoke about in the one that I attended. And to not see any of the other input in there is disappointing. So that's my my thing and we just want to make sure that it's something. That can be revisited. And if necessary, just maybe then it's the next step for the mitigation, not just move everything. That is not my suggestion. But I am disappointed that public comment. In full was not utilized to create this before you today. And of course, the planning commission wasn't at those meetings. Some were. And I don't feel like those ideas were brought forward because we never got to fully flush them out, even though we were told there'd be more public meetings about it to help flush it out. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
John.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thanks. Going back in time, the setbacks from cultivation to. Neighboring residential structure. Was one of the essential components of the program and and also to have a variance from that setback. In the very beginning, when the grand compromises were taking place. There was a meeting where staffs. That time was 600 foot setbacks from property lines. And that would have proved completely infeasible in Trinity County. Even our CUPs that are required for type three one acre cultivations. Not one of them has been able to live within even a 500 foot setback from property lines. And throughout the life of the program. The. The. The controversies have been few, but have been loud. Over the course of the program, there's been over 750 licenses issued. There's about a third to a half of them that have required variances to the setback. And of those, it's really only about five or six, maybe seven total. Of these projects and these variances that have been controversial at the planning commission and the SOUPs. And so I would call that a 99% success rate. To the way the program has been administered. to the way the program has been administered since its inception until Director Connell arbitrarily changed all this. And so it would also require a tremendous amount of redevelopment and resubmital of appendix Cs to go along with the language if we don't change this here today. The staff has done a very, very thoughtful, thorough job of sorting through this issue for years and years. And what they've come up with here is a very practical, feasible means of both protecting neighbors' interests and allowing the program to actually function. The planning and county staff time that is absorbed by this chore annually has taken away from the economic development and viability of our county in other ways. For years, all the oxygen gets sucked out of the room with these variances. And so I strongly encourage adoption as written. Staff and council have done a great job of vetting this through many, many public workshops for a long time. And what we have is a very refined document. I want to encourage adoption. And let's just turn the page and move on to more important things in the county, protecting neighbor interests. If there's a letter not of approval, then it goes to a public hearing legally noticed at the planning commission.
Hey, John, time is up.
In the traditional way.
Okay, thanks, John.
Carla.
Hello, this is Carla Avila from Hyam Palm. Thank you, Chair and Board, and I really appreciate all the thoughtfulness that staff has into this item. I hope you'll bear with me. I have some internet connectivity issues. Hopefully you can hear me okay. Variance process really came about before we had CEQA, before we had an FEIR, before the state had released the DCC's final state licensing requirements. It was a way to do what we could with the tools at hand at the time to come up with a balance between farming and the ability to continue farming, especially for legacy cultivators and pre-existing sites who have not done any new development, and also to protect neighbors' interests. And I have a variance. I went before the planning commission on April 27th of 2016. I've had multiple neighbors at the site next door, at our neighbor's house next door. They've all been quite different as neighbors, and I have never had any complaints from any of them. But every year, my family is required to go through the process as if we were going before the planning commission again. Neighbors do receive annual notices. I think that there can be a lot more done about awareness perhaps of that. I don't really think keeping this process in a way that is not optimal or really the correct definition of the term would be the right way to deal with any sort of nuisances that are coming about. I have a house, a playground, a veggie garden, all within less than probably 40 feet or about 40 feet from my canopy. And I'm looking at my test laboratory tests, and I see in the scent of my flower, there's bisabolo, which you will find in chamomile and a lot of wildflowers. There's linolol from lavender. There's pinene, quite a bit of pinene, which is also obviously present in our environment. There's some limonene and citrine, which will not necessarily produce a nuisance or a actual detriment to anyone's health. I think the most fair way to go forward is to correct the variance to an administrative buffer reduction as suggested by staff. This is a much more just applicable term. And I think that dealing with any actual issues is outside of the purview of this particular measure. Right now, we have hundreds of farms that have to go through this process who haven't changed anything about their development in many cases in years. Some of them would have to get a variance just for a water tank at this point. So this is a really smart way to go forward, and I strongly encourage you to follow staff's recommendations and approve this today. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no other reason.
Okay. Bring it back to the board. Did anybody have additional questions they'd like to raise to staff at this point? Yeah, I do. So go ahead. Just wanted to make sure everybody else had a chance. Thank you, Drew. So one of the things I just wanted to do, since we had two people show up who sounds like have been waiting, and I'm not sure if that's waiting because they were hoping to go through this new process or just the fact that having to go through the old process takes so long, whichever. But can you just clarify for the board? If this approach is not in place for these two particular applicants, then what is the process they have to go through?
Well, for the gentleman that spoke, I spoke to Lisa Wright, who's their consultant, because I wasn't familiar with exactly, you know, which projects they were the owners of. For the gentleman that spoke, he is essentially a new CCV application, so it would need a planning commission hearing. I'm not entirely sure what other pieces of his application or that CCV process are pending, but based on my most recent discussion with staff, we did just recently schedule, hopefully, one final CCV hearing for the planning commission for the next meeting. So based on that discussion, I believe that there's some missing piece of documentation that prevented staff from scheduling that. Otherwise, we would have taken the opportunity to schedule more than just one CCV for the upcoming planning commission hearing. For Ms. Lor, she was a CCV that went to the planning commission, and the CCV request was denied. And I think it's a great example of why we need to move away from the CCV process in the sense that it was a pre-existing, pre-configured site, but based on planning commission's review of aerial imagery, it looked like there was lots of open space. So they went the route of saying, oh, well, it looks like there's space here and here and here on the parcel, so they should reconfigure. In that case, there was no neighbor opposition received, and the structures were pre-existing. So that was a decision the planning commission had made. And rather than bringing it to you all for an appeal of the planning commission's decision, my hope had been that, you know, we would have heard this at the last board meeting, would have been two weeks ahead on getting this approved. But either way, I'm hopeful that this will go forward, and she'll be able to apply for the administrative buffer reduction director's use permit.
And which, the one that was denied, what part of the county is that in?
Poker Bar, I believe, Old Poker Bar.
Oh, so both of these were Poker Bar.
I think they're close to each other.
Okay, thank you. Let's see. You saw me raise my eyebrow when I heard 750 licenses, and I keep thinking of the 530. So help me wrap my head around. We have a maximum of 530 active at a time, but we've actually issued 750 that cycled through?
Sure. I mean, just based on, you know, the numeric CCL value, we're in the low 800s right now for the new licenses that we're issuing. So you could say, you know, given the total number of appendix Cs we've received, which is still in the low 400s, you could say that, you know, there's been 50% turnover in the program since its inception.
Okay. And the term we used was issued, and I know we've received hundreds and hundreds, but do we actually process and issue 750?
I can't verify John's statement, but I would say that yes, that seems quite possible that, you know, early on, you know, we kind of got close to program capacity, I think, leading up into, you know, 2019, 2020. And then with program shutdown and the appendix C requirement, you know, a variety of projects have either, you know, gone out of business or decided not to proceed or so.
Go ahead.
To address one of the concerns from public comment, and then just also just had a general curiosity on my part. In the event that something does change from the neighbor's standpoint or maybe changes and folks haven't notified you that it's changed, how does a person complain anonymously? Or what is the process for somebody to say, this has changed? You guys have, you haven't been notified, but I'm looking at it every day, and I know that something's gone. If something has changed on this site and I want it to be addressed, how does a neighbor do that?
So generally, that mechanism is the online complaint portal, which is located on the planning department website. And then complaints that are received are verified by code compliance staff, sort of as the first step to see if the complaint is associated with a parcel that's in the cannabis program. Complaints received that are not in the cannabis program are referred to the sheriff's office. And then complaints on, you know, program sites are handled internally.
Okay, thank you.
And just again, some clarifications for transparency. I had some discussions with Drew yesterday, just because I was trying to work through some of these things, even though I've been involved from the ad hoc on this for a long time, so a lot of it's very familiar. I was reading through the backup materials and some of the things that had been submitted and trying to work my head through it. And so one of the things that I would just want to clarify, this whole thing about the 350-feet setback from the adjacent parcel residential structures is not being proposed to change. That's exactly what we've been doing. It's just we're continuing to do it, but we're saying the way that we handle a variance slash buffer reduction zone to that is going to change.
Generally, yes. Just for clarification, I would point out that one of the recommendations that came from the planning commission when we had the discussion study session was to convert the term cultivation to canopy. So the setback requirement to legal dwellings on adjacent parcels is still the same essentially, but the mechanism or the elements which would be measured from or the dwelling that would be buffered from those cultivation elements, just providing, I guess, more clarity and resolving the staff's change of interpretation that happened in 2022.
Okay. And so right now, this is, going back to some of the comments and what you've shared as well. So originally, it was, the word has always been cultivation, but that was then reinterpreted to mean from canopy or from, or no, that was reinterpreted to mean all aspects of the operation. And now we're talking about, should it be back to mature canopy?
Right. So my understanding of the historical practice was that even though the ordinance said, use the term cultivation, that the actual practice of staff was to measure from mature canopy, between mature canopy and the adjacent residence.
And then the way it's worded now is meant, is meant to be from?
Canopy. Canopy is the way it's proposed, yes.
Something? Yeah, please go ahead.
To pick up on that question, this change, however, is only being proposed with regard to specialty cottage, specialty and small licenses versus medium license where the verbiage remains cultivation.
So just to kind of give some additional context to that, the license types that you stated, which generally we would refer to as small cultivation licenses, but includes the smaller license types like specialty cottage, cottage, and small. So that's 10,000 square feet down to 2,500 square feet of mature canopy. Those are the only license types for all of, any and all of the cannabis licenses that are issued that have a residential setback requirement. Medium cultivation does not have a residential setback requirement. It just has the property line setback requirement. The other additional license types have no specific property line setback requirement. They just have the setbacks from sensitive receptor school buses, things like that, that are standard across, you know, all the license types, which is, I think it's 1,000 feet from churches and schools, 500 from a registered bus stop or something like that. And so it's only those cultivation licenses, with the exception of medium, that have a residential setback requirement. None of the other license types do.
And another thing that we were talking about, you know, the basically wrong terminology, I'm sure, but open air versus enclosed cultivation, that basically doing any aspect of this, if odor is the issue that's trying to be addressed, doing it indoors where it can be filtered and all that kind of stuff, provides more ability to mitigate the impact of the odors, correct?
And so that's one of the reasons that, you know, in the, in looking at the EIR and in trying to work through what seems sensible and taking into account, you know, the past historic practices, the processing buildings and other, you know, and processing might be a confusing term to use, but basically anything related to what I would consider to be post-harvest. So you harvest the cannabis plant, you have some sort of drying building. Potentially, there's a space where the product is trimmed, something like that. All of those are required to be fully secured and enclosed structures. And mechanical ventilation or mechanical filtration required to be basically along with the odor control plan established. So it's much easier to mitigate the potential odor impacts or the generation of odors from a storage building that can be sealed, closed, have carbon filters, have other types of technology to minimize or mitigate the odor impacts off-site. So we felt that, you know, and I think that's where the program landed originally, especially in the preparation of the EIR, is that, you know, it really is the mature canopy, especially as it relates to outdoor cultivation that is the most difficult to mitigate. But that, you know, the other outbuildings and things like that that are used in conjunction with the cultivation operation are more easily, the odor is more easily controlled and mitigated.
And am I correct that those post-harvest cultivation steps don't have to take take place in a closed, they just often do?
Well, there's a bit of nuance to exactly, you know, how one might define post-harvest. But in terms of the way I look at it generally is when you harvest a mature cannabis plant, the plant is being taken from either the outdoor, you know, it's being taken from the mature canopy area one way or another, whether it's outdoor or greenhouse or indoor for that matter. And then being moved to a building of some sort that is enclosed. And so, you know, obviously, it's more easy to mitigate the odors from an enclosed structure than from an open-air structure or structureless, open-air canopy area.
Yeah, and I'm just trying to clarify, it's more standard procedures rather than a requirement that that post-processing be done or the post-harvesting processing be done indoors. We don't, our ordinance doesn't say, and when you do that, once you take it out of there, you must do everything else in an enclosed facility.
I could try to reference the exact code section, but my recollection is that, yes, either in code or in the mitigation measures specifically, it does say that all of those activities need to be performed in an enclosed, secure structure. Some of that may be a carryover from the DCC regs, but I would say that, yes, it is required that those activities need to occur within a structure as far as the nuance in terms of how an individual cultivator moves, you know, the steps of that process from, you know, actually cutting down the mature plant to staging in an area while they're moving it into their drying area, you know, there may be periods of time when it's transitioning into that structure, but they cannot dry or trim in open air, if that generally captures your question.
Okay. Well, I may have another misconception that you can clarify too. My understanding right now is that in those enclosed facilities, while the benefit of them is that you can, one, keep the odors in, but also have the barriers. keep the, the odors in, but also have the various levels of mitigating filtering and so forth, that those mitigation features aren't required until or unless there's concerns raised that says, okay, now implement that.
So the odor control plan is required.
Right, the plan.
Generally, for all cultivation sites with the exception in code to ag zone parcels. In terms of the way we've implemented the appendix C, um, I am not aware of any appendix C that we've approved that doesn't have an odor control plan, period, whether on an ag zone parcel or not. I think what you're referring to is sort of like the corrective action procedures, I guess we could refer to it as in terms of, you know, do they need to, are they required to implement all of the phases or stages of that odor control plan upon the, you know, commencing operations to your question, no, they are not. The way the EIR set it up was that essentially if complaints from offsite receptors are received, at, then at that point, the cultivator is required to begin to implement the first phase of their odor control plan.
Okay, thanks. And then another thing that we talked about again, just trying to think through, uh, some of the options available to us. Very much in my position, still supporting what we're trying to do here, but also trying to look at some of the concerns that were raised was that, uh, as we see in some of the backup materials, there was concern that measuring to a residence is leaves out that you might have other uses of your property that are actually more impacted. Uh, whether that be you have a playground, you have a zeebo, you have a butterfly garden that's much closer than the 350 feet from the mature canopy to the residential structure. And yet that isn't really taken into consideration and therefore the property owner on the other side of the fence, if you will, doesn't have the quote same protections for that. Now, in this process, what we would be able to do is, um, give them this opportunity for the letter of opposition uh, that could reflect that. Um, and then we were also discussing that we have this, uh, knowledge that is addressed in the statement of overriding considerations. It says, we know that the odor can't be fully mitigated. We know that, um, it can travel multiple times to 350 feet. And, and so, you know, we're taking all these various steps to try to mitigate as best we can. But when I was talking about things like, well, hmm, what if we, uh, because of some of these concerns that the odor is generally the one I hear about the most, uh, that you extend that and say, instead of just the adjoining properties, you go out 500 feet, 1,000 feet. And, and basically your, your feedback to me at the time, and please correct me if I state it wrong, was just depending on where you chose that number, one, the staff burden of that, uh, gets to be as burdensome perhaps as trying to process the CCVs as we do today. And, um, two, that if you, you actually tried to say a setback from the residential property line versus from the residential structure, that that would greatly limit the number of parcels that these operations could take place on, which could then, uh, and that, and that's not accounted for in our EIR. That would then force them, if you will, into, uh, perhaps other areas where they get concentrated, which is that concentration is not considered in our EIR. And therefore, if you tried to do some of these things where I was trying to think of, how do we get better balance? I was running into a lot of roadblocks in my mind and where I, where I came out was to say, well, I'm getting into discussion. Uh, let me just clarify, did I, did I reflect your response to some of my questions?
Yeah, sure. Um, if I may just kind of expand on my perspective of sort of, you know, where that discussion, at least I landed, you know, in sort of contemplating the efficacy of the proposed ordinance changes. I think that's, that's, you know, the balance that the EIR tried to achieve i- is that it acknowledges that there will be odor impacts from cannabis. Cannabis is going to smell like cannabis at a certain point during its, you know, harvest cycle. But that the, the requirement to have an odor control plan and then the complaint process to require a particular cultivator or group of cultivators, let's say in an area to implement very, you know, the, the levels of that order control plan, I think are sort of the balance of understanding that odor concerns are subjective. And so in some areas of the county and in some of the CCV hearings that we, we've had at the planning commission, we've had some people come up and say, I like the smell, it smells like money to me. And then we have other people that come up and say, you know, it makes me physically ill to smell it. So I think that's kind of the balance of, you know, that through the complaint process and it's sort of an aside to what we're discussing now, but just to, you know, kind of stated, I think that we could more clearly publicize in, in some capacity, you know, the ability for folks to complain. Maybe do some sort of more robust odor, specific to odor, odor complaint process. And then I think generally where we should head, um, in ordinance updates is, is kind of to create a more robust nuisance process, because this really isn't an environmental impact per se. It's a nuisance to certain, you know, constituents that, that find it objectionable. And so continuing forward with trying to find the balance between acknowledging the fact that cannabis likely will generate odors and, you know, from the statement of overriding considerations that it is significant and unavoidable because it can't be fully mitigated. Um, you know, that's kind of the balance, they have the odor control plan. If odor complaints are received, then they're going to need to move up in their levels of odor control. And then as we've discussed in ad hoc and it's come up before, you know, there's not a lot of technology available to us to quantify odor concerns. Um, essentially we have like a VOC meter, which is a volatile organic compound meter that would measure, you know, some amount of the terpenes or a nasal ranger or olfactometer, which essentially dilutes ambient air through a carbon filter and you can set a threshold based on dilution to say, okay, you know, we find this to be an acceptable level of odor. Again, the issue is still, some people find any level of it to be objectionable and other people have no objection, so.
Yeah. And then just last thing that I think, uh, before we perhaps go to board discussion is, I want to make sure I'm interpreting this right and, and that we are all considering it in, in the right frame of reference. As you said, in today's world, if somebody has, uh, something that today would be treated as a, uh, CCV, then that means they do all the work, your team does all the work to go before the planning commission. And there, uh, and therefore that is the opportunity that neighbors would have to say, I have concerns and the planning commission can hear those and so forth, uh, and then the decision is made.
Yep.
In this process, uh, your team would look at the information, if there's a buffer reduction, uh, required. Uh, they would send out the notices, uh, so that people could submit an op, notice of opposition. If there are none, then it just gets approved. And, and at that point, if they then had concerns, then they would have to go through an appeal process. But, but if they did issue an opposition letter, then you would basically force that application to go through the planning commission as it would have before this process was put in place.
Yes.
Okay.
The other thing to add that I noticed wasn't clearly captured in the proposed ordinance revisions is specific reference to the attenuation plans. Um, and so I think that may be appropriate to make reference to it, but also, um, there, as I sort of mentioned, there is significant guidance in that policy memo that's on the cannabis division website related to the attenuation plan. So I think that going forward, um, one of the, as part of an updated application. So we're going to take the, if this is all approved, we would take the existing CCV application and convert it to essentially the director's use permit application. One of those application requirements would be the attenuation plans. And that, the, that would be one of the required documents, just to point that out, that, that that will be something that I think makes sense for projects that don't meet the setback requirement. Understanding that there may be, um, concern from adjacent residences and that's sort of another layer of, of how we can remedy those concerns and ensure that the projects are compliant with the EIR and try to minimize their impacts to the adjacent residences.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I, I think we talked about this briefly, but I was surprised when I was reading in the documents about that one of the mitigation efforts, um, could actually be, uh, changing over to variations that had a, a different kind of odor, if you will. If, if, you know, if that, if the odor was an issue, then one of the options could be, we'll just grow varieties that have a different odor. And, uh, made me think of that when Carla was going through some of her analysis of her plants and so forth, so.
And I, I think that's a intriguing concept in, in, in the real practice of that. I think it would require great relationships between the cultivators and their neighbors to where they might have to go over and say, here, smell these five different
Like this lavender one?
Strains, which do you find least objectionable, you know? So I mean, we could certainly try and head in that direction, but.
I was just surprised to see it. Yeah, thank you. Okay, any other questions?
I have a quick question. So just quickly, the, uh, changing from into canopy will address all of the concerns that we addressed in our original board. Correct?
Because, sure, I understand.
Well, our, originally when we brought, when this was brought before the board, our resolution was for, um, cultivators who had been caught up in the change of definition. That was one of, so just by changing that, we will address all of that, those addressed in our original resolution.
Yes.
So, and the rest of this is in addition to that, to create a method move, moving forward that gets us away from using the variance incorrectly and make it easier for staff and cultivators to move forward, right?
Yeah, and I think it, you know, generally one of the goals was to reduce the administrative tasks associated with a buffer reduction or CCV for, for any project that doesn't meet the setback requirement. Where previously, regardless of whether there was neighbor consent or neighbor opposition, it had to go to the planning commission for an initial CCV hearing. So what we've proposed is to include, along with the notice of application, the consent opposition letter, and only those buffer reductions that are opposed will then require a planning commission hearing. So that's going to reduce potentially, you know, a, a significant number of items. Staff has to prepare, I think, commission staff reports and then schedule planning commissions. Um, so yeah, that is, that is part of the intent as well.
All right. Uh, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Go ahead, Joe.
One process question and one just logistical. I'll start with the logistical question. When you are at the portion of what is before us under section two, and it's talking about the medium licenses, that, um, second sentence uses the word variance. If the following portions, if we do change from variance to buffer reduction, will that language be changed there to agree or are we still using the word variance?
So what you're seeing on page two of, of the draft ordinance, um, as section seventeen, four, three, zero, five, zero, A nine, that is unchanged language that currently exists in our cannabis ordinance. And so because it's a property line setback and not a residential, not a setback from an adjacent structure, we felt that, one, we weren't really trying to tackle medium licenses in public comment you heard, and, and I can, you know, verify that every single type three license that has been approved also, um, went forward with a variance request that was also approved. So there's not a single medium license in the county that has met the 500 foot property line setback. Um, so that would remain a traditional variance. And the, the way that the ordinance revisions as proposed basically left that subsection alone and then proposed the new buffer reduction specifically related to the residential setback requirement versus medium cultivation, which only has a property line setback, not a residential, uh, a residential setback requirement.
Yeah, okay, I follow you and thank you for that. So when this is in discussion in a planning commission setting and you talk about a variance, you will be talking about it in terms of traditionally what a variance means. There's some, um, aspect of that property that makes it different from, say, a neighboring property or a similar like property that says, hey, if I had that property instead of this one, my situation would be different. And so like the reason I think that we moved away from this word variance is because it's not a traditional meaning of the word.
Right.
And so I just, like, if we're cleaning it up now, it seems good to clean all of it up or you're telling me that, no, this really doesn't mean that.
Um, I think that in terms of the median licenses and the property line setback requirement, it, because they are, one of the differences is that for many of the small licenses, um, the sites were previously configured, right? And so you, in order to apply for a medium license, you need to have a small license. And so the, moving from a small license to a medium means that you are asking permission for that conditional use permit for the medium license and, and basically stating the intent to expand the operations. So it does conform to the, the, the use of the term variance in the traditional sense where if you have a cliff on the property, then you might not be able to reconfigure to meet those property line setbacks because there's a cliff there and you, you know what I mean? So it, it's, it's definitely more in line with size, shape, topography as the general criteria for variance, as opposed to, um, a setback requirement from an adjacent residence, in, in many cases on sites that were already pre-existing and have, sorry.
So the answer is yes. Got it. Okay, thank you. Okay, that was the logistical question. Now I have a process question. So you have to have this attenuation plan in place for your license to move forward, but it sits as a plan. Nothing is being implemented until somebody complains and there are levels of implementation, correct? Would they have to have had, I just wonder about the timing of that. Because you have a plan, doesn't necessarily mean that you have the, maybe you need items or you need to put in a system. A plan doesn't mean a process sits waiting for somebody to push a on button. So if someone complains, what, what kind of, what, what's the expectation of when their level of comfort will fall into a range that they are more in agreement with? It's probably different for each situation. There's probably no one answer to that.
So I just want to, I want to clarify that there's a, there's a distinction between the attenuation plans and the odor control plan. The attenuation plans are an additional requirement that we created as a result of the original waiving of the CCV requirement. So those are noise and light attenuation plans. The odor control plan is similar. Um, so I don't know if you want to get into the attenuation plans because I think your, your specific question is about the odor control plans.
So I'm using the wrong word. You don't use attenuation in the odor category.
The attenuation plans refer to additional requirements that were created along with the approval of resolution twenty twenty-three, zero, seven, one.
Okay.
But specific to your question about the implement, sort of the practical, on the ground implementation of the odor control plans, um, what I can say is that in some of the situations that occurred, um, last year, I think it took the applicants one to two weeks um, to actually step their phase up into activating their odor control plan. Um, the first phase and, and all of the odor con, control plans are, are, you know, somewhat different depending on who prepared the environmental document. But generally, the first phase of implementation is carbon filtration. Um, and that, that, you know, is most effective in a enclosed structure. Um, it wouldn't be terribly effective in, for an outdoor canopy area. But for full outdoor, there, there are a variety of methodologies and technologies proposed to try to address the odor concerns such as high pressure misting systems, planting other plants that also have odors that could potentially mask. high pressure misting systems, planting other plants that also have odors that could potentially mask the cannabis odor, things like that.
Which would take a while.
Yeah, planting something that would mask, you know, that would outcompete the odor of cannabis would would take a while.
And just one last thing before, if you make a motion, I just want to clarify, Drew, you said, we might want to consider either referencing or more strongly or clearly referencing attenuation plans. So could you explain that before I hear a motion?
Sure. My suggestion would be that in section seventeen four three zero five one A one that reads should I read the the previous sentence so it makes more sense, or should I just read that section?
Make it make sense.
Okay. Buffer reductions. When deliberating a cannabis license application, a reduction from the required 350 foot distance from an adjacent legal residential structure on any adjoining parcels may be considered by the community development director when the following criteria is met. Number one, that the applicant has submitted an application for and has provided documented justification for their requested buffer reduction. We could, I would suggest that we we can either say has submitted an application and all associated requirements. And then in the buffer reduction application, we can clearly state that the attenuation plans are a requirement. Or you could specifically call out in section one, the requirement for the attenuation plans. The other thought that I had was that if this goes forward today into a second reading, that I'd be happy to draft an updated application, you know, converting from this to current CCV application to an administrative buffer reduction directors use permit application and include that in backup so that you can see what the actual application requirements are because right now the CCV application is quite robust and is probably a 12 page application with all sorts of environmental questions and checklists and a whole lot of information is requested. So we would probably just carry that forward, update the language and clearly state, you know, the the requirement of the attenuation plan and some of those other documents associated with that policy memo when we establish that requirement. So I'll say it again simply, I would suggest that the applicant has submitted an application including all additional requirements. Then that sentence reads a little funny, but I'm sure we can work it so that it makes sense grammatically.
And all associated requirements, including in an attenuation plan?
If you want to keep that.
That's your suggestion.
Well, I think I would, I'm I'm prepared to take a stab at a emotion so we can actually dive into doing the grammar as a discussion. I would move that we adopt this with the change to A one, but not only to include that attenuation plans as Drew brought forward, but also to add into that A one, a requirement that these be on sites that are legacy cultivation sites so that we're not giving buffer reductions in an area that doesn't have cannabis cultivation already happening. Since the initial idea behind our ordinance and EIR was to capture legacy grows and bring them into compliance. So I'm open to ideas on how to adjust that wording, but that would be my motion is to restrict this to only either existing cultivation sites or legacy cultivation sites.
Just for clarification, you said to adopt the ordinance. We're here to introduce and waive.
Okay, so introduce and waive and with these changes.
I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion. A second, we can have discussion or another motion.
Another addition that I would like to see us make is I've searched everywhere and maybe someone can direct me to it. I don't see where we've defined the word welfare. So when someone says that the buffer reduction would not result in harm to public health, safety, or welfare, who says what one person's version of welfare means?
I have to ask county that one. So you, you know, you did pose that question in email and I looked through county code. There is title nine, which has the word welfare in it. It also contains some code sections still in the books from eighteen ninety nine, which if you guys want an interesting read, I encourage you to check that out. But no, nowhere that I found in county code is welfare defined. And I think that in terms of what we're talking about specific to odor impacts, again, it's a subjective concern. And so that is why we've just generally included the consent opposition letter so that, you know, if people oppose and it's on the basis of what they would consider to be their welfare, then we're not dealing with the nuance and, you know, the definition of what is or isn't welfare, but just generally that they're opposed and it's going to go to a public hearing.
Okay.
A question for Drew or county council. Is there a formal, official, easily referenced definition of what is a legacy site?
I don't think that we've defined that in the past.
I can say that I don't believe that legacy is a defined term. And I don't believe that preexisting is 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 also not defined in terms of what currently exists in seventeen four three. To Dan's suggestion, I think we can come up with the terminology that we feel is appropriate, knowing that there are a variety of terms that are used in our ordinances that aren't defined. Specifically.
I guess, you know, separate from the an actual definition, do you and your staff have a way of saying yes, this would qualify and no, this one doesn't? I mean, is it, is it, there, somebody grew six plants once there 20 years ago, it's been a commercial operation for, I'm not, I'm just not clear on how you would implement.
And without knowing the specific language that you're proposing to be included, I don't know that I could give you exactly how we would quantify that. But I'm happy to kind of engage in the discussion to make sure that we create, you know, language that captures the intent of the board.
I think that that's not going to be a problem. We can come back with some language and need to tweak it a little bit we can, but I think we understand what he's getting at as far as having preexisting cultivation sites.
And would this be something we can continue with as a board or would have to go back to the planning commission?
I think you can continue with that as a board to define what legacy means.
They had, they had a shot at it. One thing, if you wanted, and I can, I can change my motion if after this conversation, but would you feel more comfortable defining that if in the proposed language, it said within the existing footprint of legacy cultivation area? Because that would be something that you could define if and if it was six plants 20 years ago, it would it would restrict it to that area, which what I'm trying to do is to steer us back toward the original intent so we're not granting buffer reductions to put cannabis operations that didn't previously exist in an area they shouldn't be.
And and I follow that. I guess I would just ask for some clarification and in your discussion, are you are you thinking anything that was previously used for cannabis cultivation as a legacy site? And would that be differentiated from a previously licensed site? Or are we trying to sort of capture all of those things into one bucket and, you know, one?
I would, I would say we're capturing them in one bucket because the original intent was to license illegal cultivation to bring it in to make it legal. So I still think that there is while I don't think we're going to have a lot of people that haven't got into the program, get into the program at this point. There should be an ability. What I don't want to see is new development in places where we shouldn't have new development for cannabis cultivation. I, we don't need to see people going in and and doing a three acre conversion and putting in a cultivation site 325 feet from a neighbor's house in Lewiston. We don't need to see that. If there's already an existing greenhouse infrastructure or flats that have already been made previously disturbed, it's different than having a full new built build out in an area that we in the past have determined is not really correct for cannabis, but because we wanted to bring people into the program, we wanted to get illegal cultivators legal and bring them into compliance. Okay, so we were allowing that and we don't want to get away from that to to build new build out. That's what I want to try to stop.
And I would just off the top of my head, maybe suggest that we, if I'm following your intent down, that we maybe use the term undeveloped. I don't know, it's
But we
So who could say? Where would we include that?
I just, I have a difficult time telling still in my planning pea brain where we say where you can't. I think we're better off to say where it is usable and not say that we're not going to allow you an undeveloped site. So I just my own personal utilization of.
I can, so I can ponder that while you guys continue your discussion.
So am I hearing then from the board that a site, a legacy site that may have been illegal would be considered in our general definition that we're talking about of legacy or existing sites?
Yes.
Just, just as we craft this definition, I'm trying to make sure we're
That's my intent in my motion. I can't speak for the board, but that's the intent of my motion.
The intent of your motion.
Yes.
Okay.
And you're including in that, you're including in that anything that's still as of this date been in existence, but never been licensed.
Yes. But if it's already, if it's in existence and that is still would fit the intent of our original cannabis ordinance and our EIR was, we wanted to get those licensed. So that's why. And if we were only going with licensed sites, then we're really wasting our time with this, I think. Because anything previously licensed, we would have captured just by changing the definition back to canopy rather than cultivation. So.
And and in your reference to this legacy site, as we've been discussing it, is it active legacy, historically legacy? But it could have been an operation, but it shut down and but they want to bring it back. Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, I'm what I'm not wanting to see is new development.
Right, yeah.
So a legacy site to me would be if you have a spot where there's a bunch of crushed PVC hoop houses and somebody wants to take that, clean up the mess and cultivate there, more power to them. We don't want to create more of the problems we've had. We want to clean them up. That was the intent of this when we started.
So something along the lines of it to include.
Excuse me, county council, can you lower your mic?
Sorry about that. So legacy could include or would be existing areas developed for cannabis cultivation, including licensed and unlicensed areas. Legacy does not include newly developed or newly expanded areas developed for cultivation.
Because you don't want somebody to say, oh, well, the only way I get into this is if I go ahead and do it illegally now and then I can get in versus, okay, historically that was done and now, okay. I think that wording capture for you?
And with me.
Okay.
Can I pose a question?
Okay.
Which is, how would we define newly developed?
That which did not exist at the time that this was passed?
Yep, that would be my suggestion.
Okay.
And then as of the, yeah.
And looking at it, I think it should be included into subsection A and could be
Its own number.
A five, probably as one of the criteria that needs to be met.
I would amend my motion to make it its own bullet point or number instead of trying to put it all into one.
And it sounds like county council's got a good grasp of what we need and that this is sufficient for us to, as you said, you could go work on it more if this is what the board approves and bring it back and it would still be able to be a implemented the next time second.
Yeah, these are just definitions. We're not changing the substance of the actual.
Yes.
I would suggest for just board consideration, in the same respect that SuRazer Frazier is looking at something to do with what the existing grows, the legacy grows are. I would like to see us going forward, measure from, measure even these specialty cottage, specialty and small licenses from a property line for our initial distancing that then would be consider, you know, you would consider just does that buffer need to be made smaller for whatever reason?
I would
It bothers me in concept that it feels like we are allowing that we take someone else's property right away from them by what they can do in that space that isn't being used. I have a a large distance from the now canopy next to me to my current dwelling. But I want to build an ADU for mother-in-law quarters or whatever. And that's within that zone that of course this person can't just pick up their operation and set it back because I want to come forward with mine, for example. But that really is that property owners, that's a property, that's their their inherent right to deal with on what they choose. So granted, what is is, but is there a way that we could then change that piece going forward as well?
I think that would be a question for our grander cannabis ordinance update. Possibly more, we would even get into EIR updates at that point. And while I definitely agree with you, I think that I don't think it's something we can get into with this small stage. It's going to be a large question and basically what it is to me, the by using a, the we called it a setback. It's not really a setback because it's from your residence, but what we're doing is granting someone the use of their neighbor's property. If you really want to go back, I've said that in public meetings a long time ago. To establish an actual property line setback is going to take a lot of work because 350 foot property line setback would be catastrophic change to our our ordinance. So I think that
Is this something that is currently on your list?
In a way, in a way. It's, it's something that I hope to address for sure.
I will say supervisor Cox, I was in the same place, had some of those discussions with Drew and and again, running up against what Dan is saying now. I keep going back to Dan and supervisor Frazier, all that, sorry. But but I kind, I ended up coming away saying what we're doing here is not changing how that 350 feet is used. We're just trying to say, what's the process by which we address that 350 feet? And in the bigger picture work that we have now committed, that's going to happen in less than eight months. It may be seven months and 27 days, but before the end of the year, a full ordinance update where we can look at things like we're going to discuss next of overlay zones and new zoning requirements and limiting to this kinds of parcel and all kinds of stuff that we can do. And we'll have time to figure out what are, what are the impacts then to the EIR and everything else. But but if we, if we try to do that right now, then you might as well throw this away. Basically, and and I struggled, believe me, because Drew probably had a mini stroke when he read some of what I was saying because, you know, I was even getting caught up. And when I go back and look at the statement of odor writing considerations, I get mad. Because what it basically said is, yeah, we know. Because what it basically said is, yeah, we know this is going to be a problem for a lot of people and we can't do much about it, but it's okay because of these reasons. And, and that just makes me mad because I think that, uh, and I get it that in some ways, some statement like that had to be made or else you can't move forward because some of it is truly not mitigable or can't be mitigated, but I just feel like it's led us to a weird place. So I was struggling at that macro level and then trying to get down to a more detailed level to say, how do we fix this? And in the end, what I came away with was the only way we fix that, uh, and finding that right way to fix it is through the over, the whole over, uh, update, but not here. That, that's just where I came out.
And I agree. That's a big uh, question tackled today. And what I think it does do is it gives the opposing landowner that is three hundred and fifty feet away from the canopy to build something within three hundred and fifty feet and then say you're, you're not good anymore. And that's something I think we need to, to look a little bit closer at.
And I just want to offer that I think that, you know, my, my suggestion in terms of how we try to resolve this ongoing dynamic is partly dealt with in terms of updates to the nuisance section. Um, and exactly how we, how you all want to quantify a nuisance going forward. So that even though it's subjective, we kind of land on some metric that it, that, that you all find is, is acceptable. And I think that's, you know, that and the odor control plan is a better mechanism to truly mitigate off-site odor impacts than some updated arbitrary distance from property line or adjacent residences, as Rick pointed out and in, in the E I R, you know, it says odors can travel up to two miles. So, you know, you pick, you add a couple hundred feet and it doesn't really make a significant difference in terms of the maximum potential impacts. So we really have to focus on how we mitigate those, the odor generation at the site as opposed to trying to squeeze it into, you know, a smaller box or push it further away, which just isn't entirely feasible.
Yeah, understood. And if I, council stop me if I can't have this question answered right now. I'm curious if it's on the ad hocs radar that do we really need to complain about something before we implement a process for a result we already know is going to happen? Is it, or are you planning to just leave that alone?
In, in the context of this particular amendment or if the overall ordinance update? So if you're talking about the overall ordinance update, that's probably a question for that before you versus this particular amendment?
Meaning that we have to save that for another time?
Time, yeah.
Well, we could put that on the agenda if you wanted to kind of have a ad hoc update where we talk about, well, here's conceptually some things that we're thinking of and get board direction.
Yeah, cause as, as I understand your, your question, you're talking about whether or not this should remain a complaint-driven nuisance situation, or if it's something that you should be anticipating and fixing in the ordinance because you know there are going to be complaints.
Yeah, I am asking that, but I'm also now wondering if I've overlooked something that if I, if I can't know the answer to that right now, would I suggest to change to this? And it doesn't seem like there is a way to do that. So I think I am left to wait.
Jared, can I ask one question?
Please.
Drew on the, and this is maybe for Drew and for direction, but on the neighbor consent opposition letter, if the neighboring property is public or service, B L M, some other type, not a private landowner. Uh, what is the, what is the expectation there?
I don't
For the neighbor consent opposition letter?
In terms of can a public agency oppose?
Do we, do we ask? Should we ask? Uh, what, what's the, they don't have residences?
They have uses.
But there, there's reductions only from a neighboring residence. So Forest Service doesn't have residences. One of the issues with our residency requirement.
Great. And I will add that, you know, whether they have a residence or not, um, the notice of application and a director's decision is sent out to all of the properties, regardless of whether there's a residence. So the Forest Service or any other public agency would be contacted through the application noticing and decision noticing process.
Yeah.
Well, and, and I will just say, just again, my, in general, I this was, what we're seeing as has been measured, mentioned in public comment is the work results of a lot of work. There was a lot of back and forth about how can we make this work? How can we uh, provide perhaps even more protections given the same programmatic criteria? And yet streamline the process for everybody's benefit, um, without risking anything. And, and I, I do feel like that's where we've come up and I'm fine with what I've just heard from an alternative motion. And, and I do look forward to addressing some of these other things in a bigger picture update that I, I do think need to be addressed. Um, and not to hurt the program. It's not trying to restrict it too much. It's just trying to better balance things that we can't really do here.
And um, Chair, I, I would like to um, try to maybe clean up my, my motion slightly, but Drew, Drew's suggestion that we make the, the legacy requirement, uh, its own number in the ordinance section, um, I would suggest that we'll have to do some renumbering, but the under seventeen four three oh five one A, I would suggest that there be I would, hmm, I would put it in right below three at number four before we get into everything else. And that, that number four, say the buffer reduction is for a property that has legacy cannabis cultivation as one of the requirements. If my
Did that without a legacy quantification?
Well, she's come up with the
Yeah, we would be adding the definition, what a legacy site is.
You want that between three and four then?
Yeah, I, I think that would be where it would fit the best.
I'm in concurrence with the change.
Okay, so county council, are you comfortable? You've captured enough to be able to bring it back to us the next time?
Yes, and I'm letting the clerk know about it.
All right. So we have a motion, uh, that's been amended a couple of times, but we think we're in the right place and seconded. And is there further board discussion or an alternative motion? Okay, call for the vote.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris.
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier.
Aye.
Supervisor Cox.
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan.
Aye.
Chairman Luthweather.
Aye.
And I, I just have one question for clarification. Would you guys like to see the updated application um, in, attached to the second reading?
That'd be great.
Okay. Thank you.
Be helpful. Thank you.
I'm going to call for a five minute break before we go to the next item.
Since we
Is to do the overlay zone concept in accordance with and in conjunction with the existing general plan update that we have ongoing. You've heard about numerous times that we've talked about in here, you heard one element today. The zoning ordinance aspect of the general plan update is working behind the scenes now. There'll be a first combined planning commission board open to the public workshop meeting. We're working to schedule in May. And that will be the kickoff in earnest of this from getting public input and getting more direction and PC involvement. So as far as the pros and cons associated with this, with this concept and with this methodology. You know, the pros you can see there, the con is there is a little bit of extra time that it will take because it is specifically tied to the adoption of the overall general plan. And there are some, you know, additional timeframes that that will take because there's a separate EIR for that. There's a, you know, review and adoption process for that. There's a couple of different additional steps because we're looking at a much larger document that affects the whole of county. So if you go to the next slide, Ashley, then we get into option two, which is a, you know, standard or separate standalone chapter 17 overlay zone concept. And chapter 17 is basically our zoning code for the county. The timeline for that is still not short, but it is, it is a little shorter than option one. It's about 10 months. And you can see there, the, the basic timeline is outlined there. As far as the, the steps that would be taken, you know, obviously there are some wide ranges there. This is probably along the, you know, mid to worst case type scenario. Just because there are lots of other ongoing activities that we're still working on. You've heard the general plan activities, you've heard all the numbers of community engagements that are ongoing. That will continue to be ongoing for the duration until summertime of 25, when the general plan should be ready for board review and adoption. There's a couple of different, there's a different cost associated with this because there will be some need to ensure that, you know, any type of environmental compliance is in accordance with our existing programmatic EIR. And, you know, that will then, that will already be done in the, in the general plan EIR process. Those will already be taking place. So that's why there's no additional standalone costs associated with that in that option. And then, you know, there's, there's numbers of, of PC hearings, board hearings, just all the timeframes associated with that. And then if you go to the next slide, Ashley, so that's the timeline. So the, the pros of this is, you know, it, it, this option, it would address the, these three legacy opt out type areas from 2021 that I referenced a little quicker. But the big cons are the potential conflicts with the zoning code update that we're, that we are going through. We've had some, I would say decent, even some extensive conversations with Mr. Harnish, you know, who are very much the professionals in this arena. And their high suggestion is to not do it separately because of these potential conflicts. This is their biggest area of concern is the conflicts it would, it would create. Not only from, you know, the, the written part of it, but the conflicts that would be out there from a community involvement perspective. Because this would just be one more item layered on top of all the other items we're, we're working through. And, you know, how somebody, it'd be more difficult to identify, you know, well, what meeting am I, can I come in and talking to? Is this a community plan meeting? Is this a general plan meeting? Is this a housing meeting? Is this a cannabis specific meeting? Is this an overlay zone meeting? What, what are these things? And just adding one more layer to that doesn't seem to make sense at, at this time. Especially with the, the idea and thought now that we're gonna, you know, also address the cannabis only ordinance and try to do some updates to that prior to, you know, the overall general plan update. So that's, that's the biggest con. You can see some of the other cons there. You know, there is, there is definitely duplication of staff time, some duplication of potential consultant time and, and resources associated with that. But those, those are the, the biggest one is the, the conflicts and the time, the additional time it would take. So with, with that, the staff recommendation is to go with option one and to incorporate this overlay zone concept, not only for specifically, you know, these three legacy old opt out requests that we have in hand in some form or fashion. As we heard on the 20th, they're varying degrees of completeness or varying degrees of information that are contained within those requests. But our recommendation is to, you know, let the overall general plan update incorporate this zoning overlay zone concept, and then we will address that for those three areas within that time period. And then also it will, it will then create an avenue for us to include any other type of operations that could have similar impacts or consequences, good or bad, you know, from different people's perceptions as the cannabis industry. We were trying to not create just a, you know, cannabis only topic, but create something that's a little bit larger that could be used from a larger planning perspective. Now, some folks might ask, well, county, you already have overlays within existing code. And that is, that is correct. That's a true statement. We do, there's, there's about six different concepts, topics, if you will. You know, flood plain and special use districts and some of these things that they are in there. Those were used very specific, and the overlay zone concept is a planning concept that is used multiple times throughout all counties. It's not something we're developing specifically for us. But the way it has been used in the past, it was very specific for only those items. And it was done via a board action for only that item. So if we were to do that again, we would, you know, separate from the general plan, separate from that concept, we would be doing the same thing again. That's why we're not recommending that option. We're recommending option number one. So the direct, the request from this was, you know, to bring this back to the board. And then we would get some type of board direction from, from that. So that's the request. And if, Ashley, if you go to the next slide. You know, a, a potential consideration, you know, for, for the board would be as we, as you decide upon what direction to provide the, the staff. If you do go with, you know, the option one and let the larger overlay zone incorporate with the, the general plan update. You know, there is another potential way to address these, these current three older opt out request we have in place. And that is to, you know, create some type of, again, this is just conceptual. This is not, you know, we, we have no real definition behind this yet. This would require some public forums, require going through some, you know, establishing this process. But conceptually, you know, we, we would look to create some type of, you know, temporary moratorium. And that's a, using that term loosely and because it has some negative connotations sometimes. But some type of, you know, temporary stop of issuing licenses in, in those areas for a period of potentially up to 90 days while we flush out some of those details. And then if, if those three areas chose to move forward, then there'd be another 90 day or so period where they would have to, you know, get all of the, the required documents and details up, up to speed. And if they chose to, they could go through, you know, the CUP process. But that's just one option. That's not, you know, there's obviously other options, but that's just one of them. So that's kind of what we've come up with. I didn't go through all the details of the document because it's there, it's been doc, been back up. I know each of the board members have had a chance to review that and as the public has. So with that introduction, I'll stop and entertain questions or staff can too. We've got Jim Harnish is online. If there's specific, you know, detailed planning type question, Drew's here. If there's specific, you know, cannabis type questions, then we can take it from there.
Okay.
I do have one question. If we go with option one, or we do this with the general plan update. In doing that, are we going to establish a method to either create new overlay zones or get rid of overlay zones or something in the future? Or is it still going to require board action and there's no template to use? It's if you want to overload it lays on, you're going to have to go to the board of supervisors and ask that they direct staff to create it and then go through that method. Or that's what I want to understand. Is it going to simplify it moving forward? Or are we just going to try to create some now?
The, the intent is to simplify it moving forward and to create the conditions associated with that application, if you would. And to create an actual application requirements list that, that people would know. That's the intent of it now. That would still need to be brought back to the board and board approved and all that kind of stuff.
And that was, would be my follow-up question is if we do that, and this is probably for council. Is that going to be part of our overall zoning code update? Or are we going to have to have a standalone ordinance under our zoning code that, a zoning ordinance that says this is how you create an overlay zone?
So we've, we've, we've talked through some of that with, with the experts on this. And the intent is to have, have it included in chapter 17 as far as the guidance, as far as how you would create an overlay zone. Now, as far as the approval part, you know, does it need to go to PC for approval? Does it need to go to board for approval? That piece of it will be up to this governance body to, to make those decisions. There's practices, there's standards that are out there. But as part of the ordinance update, this, this body would have to approve that. And then once that is in place, then we would follow that practice. And if, if somebody or, you know, something was within the confines of that application and they met all the requirements, I would anticipate, you know, maybe the, the community development director or the planning director would have that authority to approve that. If it goes outside the confines of that application, then it would need to go towards PC or board for approval. But again, those type of details are not flushed out yet. And that's what we would be flushing out in the ordinance update.
Other questions? Will we go to public comment? Okay, we'll open up to public comment.
Adrian Key, some hay fork. Thanks Chair, Supervisors. I think we've, this is another one that we've really kicked around quite a bit. So I'm just going to make one statement. Some number of years ago, I think before any of you were on the board here, the citizens of Hayfork brought a request for an agenda item for an exclusion zone for formula stores with 600 signatures. We were never even able to get an agenda item. So just consider that. Thank you.
Any other public comment in the room? Oh, you can go now.
Lisa Wright-Lewisson. How disappointing. Another venture into anti-business climate for Trinity County continues. Look at ways that you can prohibit businesses. I didn't get a chance to make public comment this morning because you're still making it so difficult for the working class to participate by having your discussions and your presentations and making people sit in a room while they're supposed to be on the clock or working. So it's really disappointing and for you to continue down this route with carving out segregating people. It just continues. You need to be making decisions based on the land use. You should not be even discussing this prior to the general plan update and the zoning considerations. You aren't going to be able to put overlay exclusion zones over parcels who inherently have the right to conduct that activity. So you can't say, I'm going to put this exclusion zone over an egg 40 parcel in Hinton Shaw Valley because the neighbors and the supervisor doesn't want it and his family doesn't want it. And we'll all agree because we're going to do each other favors because we want our favor the next time. Incredibly disappointing. I have people come into my office on a weekly basis that want to make investment in Trinity County. They run. Do you know why? Because they cannot rely on your ordinance as they're written or enforced because you'll just change them on the fly to suit your own personal needs, family, friends. I have people who are Trinity County residents who won't invest here because of that. And you're continuing to create this anti-business climate, but you don't have an alternative plan on how you're going to support the budget. How are you going to provide services to the people who don't want to see business development? I would venture to guess it'd be an interesting analysis how much the property tax revenue has increased since the beginning of the program. That's where your new property taxes are coming from, from the infrastructure development by cannabis farmers. It's not the be all, end all, but let it support existing business and allow it to thrive under the ordinances have been created. So obviously I'm opposed to doing anything in the short term. Let the general plan update as well as a new zoning go into effect before wasting time on any of this. Because you're only costing the county money. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other line?
Matt.
Hi Board, Chair, Matt Jefferson, Coffee Creek, Trinity Center. You know, this is a difficult subject for me. I got, you know, I don't really have much to say. I guess the first thing I really feel like I have to say is to apologize for my phone unmuting and my personal feelings coming through a couple of meetings ago. I know I'm not supposed to call out specific people, but I'm still going to apologize to Dan because he didn't deserve that. But I just, I, I support what staff said to go with option one. And I super support and hope that there can be some criteria built just like Dan was saying, so that this can go, so there's a process and a criteria to create or remove these opt outs or these overlay districts. And just that I hope that the legacy cultivators, I'm really just speaking to myself. I speak about this so much because I'm just scared to death that I'm going to lose everything that I built for. And I'm going to lose my farm because I'm in this opt out. I've, I've been cultivating up here since 2006 and I just hope that you guys can recognize that there's people in the opt outs and I hope our farms can be protected. And thank you guys. I appreciate your time. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Dana. She disappeared. Steve.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir.
Oh, shoot. Can I go after Steve?
Yes.
All right. This is Steve Lyon, Junction City. I think having a formal opt out process is a good thing. I think a quantifiable process is a good thing. I think that communities being able to have a say in how their communities grow and encourage or discourage businesses is a good thing. I think that the
We lost you, Steve.
Criteria. And I would like to see that the existing opt outs go through this process once it's been formalized so that we know that it's, what was it, 60% of the population and 50% of the parcels or whatever the breakdown was. You know, very similar to how the existing variances are going to have to go through, you know, one final neighbor notification. I think it's absolutely essential in a spirit of fairness that opt outs also have to go through this formal process to make sure that they were done properly. I don't, I don't think the existing opt outs were done with 50, with the majority of neighbors and a majority of parcels. I think they were done based on feelings, feelings in the meeting on that day. And that's not how we should operate as a county. We should do this in a fair, transparent manner based on, you know, majority of residents or property owners, I guess. And, you know, I, I think in a spirit of fairness, we need to take all the existing opt outs through this process in a very transparent manner. Thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you.
Dana.
Thanks. Sorry about that. Chair Lutwiler, Board Dana Hauser from Hayfork. I remember part of why the, the comments made, my understanding is the comments made why nothing was agendized in Hayfork for the big box stores was that we didn't have a community plan. And it wasn't part, our community plan, I don't believe was ever updated in the last general plan or something like that. It would. It is long overdue that people in power in Trinity County get called out for corruption. And this is right in line with that. The fact that cannabis cultivators have been paying for general, into the general plan and have funded it. And then moves attempted like this before the general plan, it's not subtle. It's very obvious. People's comments when they're running for office about how they support the cannabis industry and community is just stomach twisting and laughable. And I think that it's just going to have to come down to court. I think it's very clear that the county people in power and legal counsel understand that the opt outs are illegal and the only way to deal with them is to challenge them in court. And you're just making, that's I can't wait. I can't wait for the day that you feel as disgusted as I feel inside. And the, just because someone can turn their voice into sound sweet doesn't mean they're sweet. I know I'm not sweet. I'm real and I will tell you to your face that you're full of garbage. That's the difference. Hot garbage. It's not subtle. Dan? Can't even look at the camera. I'll wait out the 20 seconds. I'm pissed. I'm mad. I knew it was stated earlier. You're mad?
I've been apparently uncropped.
I won't make, I know I'm not supposed to speak directly to anything, but I, there's, it's a personal, it's personal.
John?
Hello, hello Board. This is John Brower from Junction City. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, this is, uh, this is pretty shocking. Porus County in the state attempting to set up a new ordinance whereby Director of Planning Fiat, whoever might be in that position at the time, might build a exclude broad swaths of of parcels from participating in home-based businesses. I would recommend continuing this item. This is a, this is a hot issue. And I think justifies some community workshops, perhaps hosted by both planning and supervisors or having planning commissioners and cannabis ad hoc and planning staff and county council present. To move fast on something like this would be tremendous folly. It does belong in the purview of a general plan update. Our county has a, a pretty well-written cottage industry ordinance. Most businesses in Trinity County are home-based. And I think there's a far larger picture to look at here. I would recommend continuing this item and hosting opportunities for real public engagement before doing anything fast on this very complex issue. We're the poorest county in the state. And to build, to create something like the exclusion of, of economic activity on someone's private parcel that would otherwise allow for it when they bought it or when their parents bought it or their grandparents bought it is just ridiculous. So I look forward to further engagement on this. Please don't even make a decision on this right now. And if you guys really want to open this can of worms, it's gonna require some, some very meaningful public engagement, I think. Thank you.
Thank you.
Veronica?
Good afternoon, Veronica Kelly-Abies, Douglas City. None of this is easy. It's not easy for any side of the fence and it's certainly not easy for you guys. It's not easy for staff. But I want to say this. I have watched this board work to create a balanced system throughout our county, which is part of the job. And I appreciate it and there are many people that appreciate it. We want economic viability and I know you take that into consideration. We need places for people to live at the end of the day and we appreciate that consideration as well. And thank you all, and I'll specifically say Dan because, you know, it's been a rough day in this one. But I have great appreciation for every one of you that sit up there because you take it, you take it from all sides. And we just pray and hope that you do what's best for the county as a whole, for all the people that live here and work here. I've been a business owner. I know it's not easy and I know how heartbreaking things can be. But as I, as someone who lives as well, I also know how hard it can be when things are thrust upon you. So I just send you guys prayers and hopes that the wisdom to do what's right for the county as a whole, creating the balance that we need to make us all successful. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no other questions.
Yes, sir.
Hi, Jeff Cadel of Xenia. Sorry, I actually came here to speak about the previous cannabis item and I wasn't able to get here in time. And just heard opt-outs and I wanted to speak on that as well. My farm's in Hettinshaw, which is one of the proposed opt-outs. It's, it's, I've been in the program since the beginning of the implementation of the program. I'm license number nine. I don't want to be in it. I don't want, I'm already doing it. Like, I don't opt out. I opted in. I opted in as soon as you could. And I, I think coming after the fact and even including my parcel or even some of my neighbors' parcels that don't want to be in it is, is overreach. I, I'm kind of lucky where I'm situated in the valley where you can't really see, smell or hear me at the south end away. You're all right with me mentioning you, Dan, like, you can't see, smell or hear me. I don't believe your parents can see, smell or hear me. I don't believe your sister can see, smell or hear me. They're about a miles away as the crow flies. There's not a residence within a half mile and even that's vacant. I think the closest residence is Jarrett, maybe, and if that's a residence. I, I don't want to be involved. I don't want somebody telling me what I can or can't do on my property, especially when I've done it the right way or done the best of my ability the right way. And then after the fact to come in and say, not only do we don't want cannabis there, but we don't want you to ever be able to transfer your license if you choose to sell or leave it to your children or family or maybe they want the chance to sell if I leave it to them. I've built this business. I've invested my, all my hard earned money, everything back into the business. I'm barely staying afloat as it is, but I am staying afloat. And I, I don't want to lose, you know, my life savings and investment that I've put into the property, you know, to, 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 to a whim that comes after the fact, after I've done all this. I'm, you know, most of us are just self-funded entrepreneurs, businessmen, farmers. And to do that to a business owner after the fact is, is pretty brutal to say you can never extract the money out of this. And I'm not looking at selling either. I plan to do this till the wheels fall off. And, you know, if that happens, then the license is, has no value if I can't make money. The business has no value if I can't sell it. So I, I just like to, when you're doing these overlays or however it ends up working out, like, look at existing grows and maybe leave them out because they already opted in and they were there first to a certain extent. And yeah, that's all I got to say. Thanks.
Carl?
Hello, Carl from Hayfork. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
I just want to say that we need to stop stifling economic development. Those growers have paid for the general plan more than any other participants in, in the county and we need to be shown that we're actually appreciated and we need to stop this anti-war or drug war rhetoric that still lingers because it's over, it's legal, let us operate our businesses in our homes. There's no need to violate our land use rights. And that's exactly what's happening here. So please, let's stop talking about these overlays and opt-outs and just move forward with making this county thrive with cannabis so that we can put tax dollars into your system. This is the only way you're gonna get any money for the place that you live. So when you need to live, at the end of the day, you have the resources and the infrastructure to support you in that attempt. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no other questions.
Okay, we'll bring this back to board discussion. Any other questions for staff before we go into this? I have, I have some, but I just wanted to check with others first.
I think I asked mine.
Okay, is Mentor Harness, is Jim still with us?
Yes.
Okay. So Trent, I'll let you field or share or whatever, but I, I just want to be clear. So you, you mentioned earlier that we have various overlay zones in place today. And this is a very standardly used process in other places. We just don't have a, a methodology in place for Trinity County to put these things forward. And, and so this general planning process is one way in which you can do that. And we're talking about using this overlay zone process to not only potentially add some overlay zones, which could be either affirmative or negative, but also to just have a process or whatever might come forward. And whether it's for you or Jim, when I hear the comments about, you know, we shouldn't limit rights, people to use the properties and so forth. My understanding of these overlay zones do exactly that for other types of things today. So there are overlay zones that say, "This is where you can and if or can't build certain types of buildings or operate certain kinds of businesses or use lands in certain ways." And, and I just want to get clarification on that because this seems like it, it's being taken and I understand it's a very personal thing, but it's being taken as you're weaponizing something and you're taking away rights and it's all about, "You hate cannabis" versus my understanding is this overlay zone approach is a means for a jurisdiction to effectively balance the use of their land for the benefit of the county. And I just want to better understand that and, and make sure I'm at least understanding it right because I, what I hear in public comment is not what I understand. So I don't know, who wants to take that?
Yeah, Jim, I'll kind of start off and jump in and correct and add to as, as appropriate, but in, I mean, in, in general terms, yes, an overlay zone is identifying what can and can't happen in a particular area that has been identified. Typically, those are all tied back to land use, land uses. So, you know, I think there's differing opinions out there as far as, you know, what that land use is and how a decision may be considered arbitrary or not or personal or not, but the intent of an overlay zone in the existing overlay zones we have and I just, can I pick one of them?
Mobile Home Parks is one?
The floodplain one. I mean, floodplains have been established. There's fairly detailed maps of where they are. There's lots of detail that's gone into that and that then indicates or dictates, you know, where I can or can't build a house on my piece of property. You know, that's, that's just a fact. That's the way it's been set up. So, yeah, I mean, that, that's the intent of them. And you're also right that we don't have like a set criteria, if you will. There's some standard ways they've been implemented, but there's not like a set of criteria or a procedure or process set out, set out in our particular code that says this is how you go about one. There's some standard I don't know how to call them practices, but there's some unique, or is there some common elements that have been used in the past to, to put the overlay zones into effect in our county? So Jim, do you want to hit on overlay zones a little more from just your professional planning perspective?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Overlay zones typically are used to add an additional layer of regulation for a specific purpose for a limited area. And I think flood, floodplains were mentioned just a second ago and that's the most common one. So you would have, it would be in addition to your typical zoning regulations, your development standards, building height, building setback, permitted uses. On top of that, you would overlay in this, whatever the physical area is, this additional regulation for an additional purpose. Floodplain regulation is a pretty classic one for an overlay zone. Another very kind of normal, typical overlay zone would be an airport overlay zone where in addition to the normal zoning regulations for areas within the vicinity of an airport, you would have an additional layer of regulation related to airport hazards. It might be height regulations. It might be hazardous storage regulations. So it's overlaid for a specific purpose and that's in addition to your other normal zoning regulations. So in the case of, of the opt-out provisions, it's a little bit different and I think it's gonna be complex, but I would support the staff recommendation to do this in conjunction with general plan and the zoning code because I think it would be more efficient. I think it would fit into this layer of where we're developing general, countywide general plan policies, specific policies for community plan areas. And then the zoning code regulations both for countywide and some probably specialized zoning provisions for, and some of the community plans. So to me, my planner brain tells me it's a logical approach to include this, the opt-out overlay issue as a part of the, the broader policy development and regulatory development of the zoning code.
Okay, thank you. And the, the option that was provided, not an option, but there were option one and option two, but it the, the follow-up part that basically was saying whether you take either one of these approaches, they're either 10 months away or they're a year and a half away. And so what, what can and should be done with the three areas that had submitted opt-out requests? And, and my sense, and just looking for some clarification is that, you know, as we looked at these, they have varying levels of similarity to what the board has received and reviewed and considered in the past. And that just as they've been waiting two or three years already, this would say, "Okay, wait another year or two to see if we come up with a process that you can do something." So one alternative was to say, "Well, you could, the board could put a moratorium while this overlay zone process is being approached or pursued." Put a temporary moratorium while we come up with a process that then allows for those three areas to follow an established process. That's not for an opt-out zone, it's not a permanent or, you know, emergency ordinance or any of those sorts of things, but it's a a means by which we can pause, then give those three areas an opportunity with a limited time scope, I believe it was three months, to come back to the board having followed that established process. And if all considerations are met and the board approved it, then there would, that moratorium would continue until the general plan update is done and all the opt-out, or I mean, the overlay zone work is complete. Affirmative, negative, whichever way it be. Is that, that's what that is meant to do if, if that option or alternative or supporting process was taken on.
That, conceptually, yes, if that's something the board chose to
Yep, right. Okay, I just want to make sure it's clear.
But yeah, conceptually, yes. Do we have any of those details fleshed out? No.
Yeah, right. Okay. Any other questions before we?
Yeah, I have, I have a couple of questions, I think. A moratorium on licensing, so we have in Trinity County a legal licensing program that's been functioning now for a couple of years. And I think Drew said 700 or so licenses have been approved. And we don't have a solid opt-out overlay zone criteria yet. So I, I think it's, it would be hard for me to tell the people who have been or in queue or tell the people who have been or in queue or want to get in queue for a legal cannabis license to wait for this overlay.
Are you asking a question or are you making a
I'm making
position? Uh, as a, as a position, we should wait till we have a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
I, I understand.
Yeah.
And this is really just for direction to staff today.
Yeah.
So you're not really making, having any action items. You're not talking about whether or not you're going to impose moratoriums or anything. This is really direction to staff to kind of come back to you, flush out some of those details with your group that you're talking about, and then come back and propose those for your consideration in the future.
All right, so since we don't need a motion, it's fine for him to continue. It's, we, we, we can ask questions, we can make, we can share thoughts, whatever, because we have to eventually link them up with some sort of consensus of direction to staff.
Well, you, you don't want to be liberating things not before you. So I don't want you deliberating whether or not there's a moratorium or not a moratorium, because it's not before you, that will come back. So your direction to staff today, he gave you the two options about whether or not you want this process to go forward with your consultant, to work in conjunction with your consultant for the general plan and run tandem to that. Or the other option too, which is to run separately from that. So that's really what's before you. It's about consensus about how you want them to proceed on whether or not that this issue of the overlays is going to run in conjunction with the general plan development.
And so this page of interim guidance recommendation really um, it, it's in the backup, but it's not agendized this way. So really this page is not for consideration in the direction?
Right, you don't have any action items before you today to make those detailed decisions because they haven't been flushed out yet. And Trent, you correct me if I'm wrong at any time, but
But, but I'm going to challenge this because we're, we're being asked to give direction to staff. To me, it isn't just about you do option one or option two. It can also be, and while you're doing that, pursue this. It can still be part of staff direction. We're not saying implement a moratorium, but we can say, yes, go work on option A or B and do this or not.
Correct. I, I think that just what I heard from the presentation was that those details are things that are going to be considered by this, by your group. And they're going to come back for that consideration. So you're going to be getting kind of a full um, package of details to be flushed out.
I think part of the direction to staff can be, hey, if you want to pursue option one, pursue option one and this. If you want to pursue option two, pursue option two and that. Uh, so I, I don't, I don't think there's a, a huge, I mean, yeah, there is a scope limit. But I mean, we're just looking for some direction to staff on this. We're not looking, there's no decision that's going to be made. We're not looking to change any ordinances or, you know, create any firm decisions here. We're just looking for direction.
And, and, and apologize for cutting you off when I thought we had to have a motion, we don't, so sorry. But uh, so if, you know, it, it could either lean that the, there isn't consensus to pursue any sort of a temporary moratorium to address these opt out requests, or there could be, but that is appropriate to have as part of the direction to staff. Go work on A and B or just A or B or whatever.
Right, and then maybe you add the considerations. We want you to flesh out the options for a moratorium, what those impacts would look like, what they wouldn't look like. That sort of thing can be part and parcel of your direction.
Okay.
You don't have to make a decision, we want to do this with a moratorium or we don't, maybe come back with options for you to consider.
Thank you, please go ahead then.
So I guess that's what I was trying to encapsulate in my comment.
Yeah.
And I, and Drew, you said there was 700 and something?
The more, it's, it's my understanding that i- in the event that a moratorium is considered, it would be only for new licenses in the considered uh, overlay zones. Is that correct?
So, so I, I don't want us to go down that rabbit hole too much. Um, because we, we haven't flushed out any of those details. And that's not what the board is being asked to really decide upon today. Happy to hear discussion on it, happy to hear opinions, happy to get input and that board direction. But we don't know what that means. Could that be a part of an option? Absolutely. Uh, but we, we don't, we're not here today to decide that.
Um, well, I have, I guess, some direction, I guess. Uh, since apparently according to public comment, I'm trying to push for opt outs or something today. My direction to staff would be to do this with the general plan, and I don't want it to say anything about cannabis. I want this to be an overlay zone concept that whether we're cre- creating an overlay zone for decomposed granite or other issues in Trinity County, that there's a method established going forward. What happens with that method is a future discussion. What, and that, when we had this discussion before, I thought that was kind of the direction that we had given then is to establish a method to create an overlay in Trinity County and not cannabis specific. The overlays that tick into my head quickly would, yeah, Jim brought up airport land use. Um, the floodplain, we have the historic district, we have decomposed granite. Those things, we need to be able to create issues like that or solve issues like that with an overlay zone. We don't need to even have the discussion about cannabis opt outs. This should only be about establishing an overlay. And as far as cannabis opt outs go, the reason that some of those opt outs didn't go forward is because I didn't bring them. Because I didn't, I don't even like the opt out concept also. But this isn't, this shouldn't even be in the conversation. Cannabis opt outs are not what we're talking about. We're talking about creating an overlay zone. If people use that in the future to try to opt out of cannabis, we're establishing criteria on how to create an overlay. That's all we should be discussing, in my opinion.
Well, I, I want to back up. The, the, the reason that this is on the agenda right now is that several weeks ago, maybe even more longer than that, we heard from the three groups who had presented opt out requests.
Yes.
We discussed seven, eight different ways that we could move forward. Go ahead and consider them as opt outs, process them, either approve them or disapprove them. We could do a complete halt on the program. We could do, oh, ignore them, we could do whatever we wanted to do. And one of those things that came up was we could take an overlay zone approach. And in that meeting, even though it was just kind of off the hip, and that's unfair a lot of times to ask people, uh, it was kind of presented as, well, yeah, that's a pretty standard process, it should be pretty easy and we could do that. And so, okay, well then, why don't you go work on that and come back to us? So it's on here because of our discussions about what to do about those three opt outs. Which is why I don't, I, I get it, we're talking about an overlay zone approach that is
Or broad.
Oh, broad, it's not specifically for that, but it's the reason we're discussing it today. And so that's why to me, it's not only do we pursue this or not, but what do we do in the meantime? You know, if we, if we came up with the staff recommendation of option one, we're basically saying to those three opt out groups, okay, you waited two or three years, we ignored you, we heard you, and now we're going to ignore you for another year and a half. And, and in the meantime, let things just keep going with cannabis operations and cultivation and applications and so forth. And, and you, you know, you only waited five, six years, it's okay. Versus we say, you know what? We didn't like any of the seven other options that we discussed that day. This does seem like the right approach, but we think that we should also do something that provides some sort of acknowledgement in these three areas that people came together, signed petitions and, and specifically have called out like others did, who were successful in getting opt outs. And, and they were able to have action taken by a board and, and we have not. And, and yet, because there's so much conflict raised about opt outs as a way, this was presented as a moratorium. And, and basically just saying, yes applicant, we know hearing that you can't move forward for this period of time is not great. Put your, put yourself in the mindset of the people who waited three years to get an answer like this. And so to me, they, they are very much linked. It doesn't mean that we will collectively agree on, on doing this or not doing this. But to me, I just, when I say, when I hear this is not here about cannabis, I completely disagree. It is, it is broader than that, but, but it is here because of that. And if we aren't going to address what we're doing about those cannabis opt out requests in this meeting, it'll be right back on the next agenda. One way or another, we need to tell people what we're going to do. And if, and if it's today that we're telling people, yeah, we are deciding, we're going to do option one and we're just going to let you sit for another year and a half. Okay, then the board made a decision, those groups have been informed. But we can't say, oh, but don't talk about the rest of it. That's the reason we're here. So if we don't talk about it, we aren't doing our job.
Right, and your direction to staff can include to come back with that agenda item to discuss what to do with those three. It's just not agendized today for that process. Um, that would have to be part of your direction to staff to come back, because you would have to vote on what to do in that scenario.
I don't, I don't, I don't understand. We're giving direction to staff to do either option A or B, and we're just saying, and in, and, and when you're doing that, also do this or don't do this.
Yes.
I, I, you're really, I'm really struggling to follow this and I'm, I'm not giving up until I understand it.
Of course, um, the decision about what you do with the three pending licenses would have to be voted on. And so that's not agendized for today. Part of your direction to staff could be option one, option two, neither, but I want you to come back with um, different options for us to address those three that are currently pending. So that would have to be a separately agendized item.
So you're saying the same thing she is, just differently. That we can also give direction to staff if we so choose to say to Trent, bring back on our next agenda or probably not that one, but a future agenda. The options, we could tell him to go look into a moratorium and then we would vote on that. We would have to agendize that for a future meeting. So um, and I, I do realize, yeah, cannabis got us here. Um, everything that we've talked about on this dais since I've been here has cannabis got us here. The my main point is I don't want this to only be cannabis. This has got to be bigger because I don't want to spend all of our time dealing with three pending opt outs. And then in the future, spend another however long trying to deal with something that we could have addressed at the same time. So we actually, if we could actually solve a problem and address some things rather than putting Band-Aids on, um, let's stop the bleeding, uh, is where I want to go.
I, I think that it would be, it's, there's, I completely hear you supervisor Frazier and I also hear supervisor Lettweiler in this quagmire that we're in with these specific three opt outs. I, I do believe that there is a, an, an obvious um, and, and in my, in my understanding of this and in my perception of this, there's tremendous value in waiting for this to be worked out in the general plan and, and congruency with zoning and, and with land use and, and all of that. I feel like we're, we have been and, and are still suffering from, um, as many people said, you know, building the airplane while you're flying it or all these other Band-Aids and different things that we have kind of um, decapaged together over time. And what I would hate to do is, is recreate that again. So I, I feel like, or I, it, it's, it's my best thinking that having this worked out in the, in the general plan as a whole is I believe will bear the most consistent, long-term beneficial fruit. And yet, at the same time, in that time and space, we have to create space for the folks in these three opt out communities i- in some way. Um, and I don't know exactly how that will happen yet, but I do, I do believe that we have to hold space for, for those communities that have come forward. And I also agree with supervisor Frazier that um, in the long-term process, that this needs to not just be um, cannabis centric. It needs to have a process for, for all um, overlays. And then cannabis is just one of those that will roll into that process. And the systems and, and structures need to be in place so that everything kind of goes through the hopper the same way unless there's something very unique about it. And those are just my, those are just my thoughts.
Does anybody uh, disagree with staff's recommendation to pursue option one versus option two?
No.
No.
Okay, so that clarity of direction. And then I guess I would just ask, uh, understanding at least from my perspective, why this is on our agenda today as a result of those conversations about the opt out request. I- is your direction to staff to also preserve, pursue something like was presented as an alternative uh, in the backup materials and bring that back to the board? Or are you saying this is, this is our answer to the opt outs, just go with option one?
The, my reading of the backup material was there was multiple uh, different options presented. So do you have a preference or do you put multiple of those together as um, an option that you would like to see us pursue? Uh, because
I only see one thing in the, in the interim guid- guidance recommendation, I see one thing. It's a two-step process, but it's one thing. It basically says if it was pursued, the board would, at a separate meeting, come back and say, we're going to put a moratorium on the applications in those three areas while we work on a process by which the people in those three areas can submit in an established process, a request for that moratorium to continue while we wait for option one to play out. And Thank you for your input.
I'm just going to say this is part of the direction to staff to come back, I'm assuming.
Yes, thank you.
We're not going to vote on this today.
The um, so that, that would basically be that the, the, to me, it's either there, there is some additional direction to staff beyond go with option one that is something like this, or it is, no, that's it, just go with option one. At which point my, my takeaway then is what we're saying to these three groups is, our answer is, come back and see us in August, August of 2025.
And um, question I would have there, if we're saying option one, which we've all agreed, um, option one is the best option. We're going to be establishing the criteria, I guess you would call it, for creating these um, overlay zones. And that'll be adopted with the general plan or the zoning element update. How are we going to have these three move forward in that process when we don't have that criteria, criteria established? That's, that's where I'm hanging up. I, I get where you're coming from, but I don't know how we get there from here.
At least my understanding is that, uh, we've already given the board direction, we'll pursue option one. That means that we're going to let the professionals work with staff and come up with a way that we can um, put overlays in place, affirmative, negative, for all kinds of different reasons. And that will kind of really take shape and be implemented in August of 2025. This alternative recommendation was to say, take three months, in that three months, pause in those three areas and create a mechanism, a process, not for opt outs, not for overlay zones, but for uh, continuing that moratorium until the rest of this work is done. And it, at, and this was again, just throwing something out there. If that literally took three months, then whenever that finished, then the people in those three areas only would have three months in which to use that process. They could choose not to, they could choose to, they could choose and fail, they could choose and succeed. But if they were successful, then they basically would get a moratorium on new applications, transfers in, all that kind of stuff in their areas until that overlay zone process is implemented. If they failed or didn't pursue it, then that moratorium would be lifted and things would just wait and see what happens. And again, we're not trying to give direction, I'm just trying to explain that alternative that was presented to see if the board has uh, presented to see if the board has a consensus that they want to pursue some form of more temporary, real-time, uh, solution to the opt out request? Or if we just want to leave it at, we support option one. That's, that's, we don't have, again, we don't have to, we shouldn't even probably get into those details. But are we, do we want something like that to be pursued by staff and brought back to the board or do we not?
I, I need to repeat what I think I heard you say because at one point I think you used the word moratorium when in my mind opt out belonged there. And maybe it didn't, but it changed my understanding of what you're trying to say. So a moratorium for a period of time while a process to opt out in an area is created. And when that process then comes forward, there's a period of time that the people within those areas can either follow that process and be successful or follow, follow that process and not be successful. It, it, am I understanding you correctly? You heard that as.
And successful in what?
Successful in creating then an opt out in their area.
Refer to it as an opt out, but again, we're probably getting too far into the details. We're just saying, no, it's not trying to create an overlay zone. It's saying the overlay, overlay zone process is going to take 18 months. Do we want to do something in between? Yes or no? Not, not, but not if, not, not try to recreate the opt out process, not try to recreate the overlay zone, but some mechanism by which, just as they have been on pause for two years, that the applications would be on pause for.
So could I simplify all of this to say that we could give direction to staff to say, we would like to see some options for you whereby these people get heard before 18 months?
Yes.
Or, or you want an agendized item to discuss and take action on potential options to decide what to do with those three pending applications? Because that, then you directing staff to come back with those options for you to consider and potentially vote on.
Yeah. Again, I just go back to that meeting. We said, discussed a lot of options. All of them had problems, including this one, which is what we're dealing with right now. And so we've apparently come to the conclusion, yeah, the, the, the real way to fix this in the long run, just create this overlay zone process. It can be affirmative, negative, lots of different uses. It, it, it is either the answer to the, these three opt out groups, request groups, or it's not. And I'm trying to figure out which it is.
Right. And I think that's a discussion you have to have for an agendized item. And I know that's frustrating, but right now you don't have it before you. You can direct staff to come back with potential options for you to consider and how to handle those three. But that's not up for discussion today as to what.
Right. And I, I guess the direction needs to be though, are we asking staff to go work on something that's a short-term solution? Or are we not? Because they're, they're either going to or they're not.
If the direction is too specific, then you're considering the merits of it. And that's why I'm trying to keep it broad for you to discuss and consider options for you to do that. Because right now you can't give direction to staff by reaching a consensus about what you want that ultimate agenda item to, you know, the outcome of that to be for those three. And that's where I think we're getting a little bit into the weeds about what everyone wants to do with these three applications. And that's a discussion for an agendized item. You can give direction to staff to come back with options, to discuss what to do and decide on that. But to reach a consensus about how you want that outcome to look right now is what's not agendized. And I think we're getting a little bit into the weeds about that.
And would it be fair, Jim, I just want to ask you. The other overlay zones that have been mentioned that are in existence right now are things like floodplain, historic district. Something to do with decomposed granite. I don't even know what that is. Airport safety. These are, these are facts. Water goes where water goes. I mean, this isn't, nothing here has anything to do with anyone's opinion other than I suppose maybe where you place an airport at some point. But the, the vertical zoning around an airport is, is just what it, is just an is. What we're dealing with in this conversation will be far more, opinion doesn't have anything to do here and, and, and yet this is going to. When you work this out, in other words, if we choose option one and we don't work this out ourselves in whatever conversations that requires. I don't know how to finish my question. This is very different. He gets it.
I'll, I'll, I'll answer you before you finish your question. Yes, this is going to be a huge challenge to deal with this. In fact, I've been sitting here making little notes trying to figure out what the standards might be for developing an opt out overlay zone and what the considerations are and, uh, what, what factors, at the staff level are considered to initiate this, at the board, commission and board level to approve it. It's going to be, uh, um, we've got a lot of work to do to kind of figure out how this can work in a way that is functional for the residents and for the cannabis industry and for the commission and the board. So, uh, it, it is a big challenge. It's a little different than most of these other, it is different than the examples I've given and most of the other overlay districts that I've worked with. But there are, uh, there, there can be circumstances that lend itself to more, um, and less, uh, fact-based and more opinion-based regula- regulatory structure. Maybe design, design review might be one of those that is starting to get into that realm. But, uh, that's as good an answer I can give you right now because it is going to be a big challenge for us at the consultant and staff level to kind of noodle through all of, um, the history of this, the objectives of what we're looking for and how we can develop some objective fair standards.
And I wonder if, if this doesn't get into direction, but just concept as you move through this, could, is there a space to stop calling anything an opt in or an opt out? Can we look at things, if it was just solely land use discussions, best areas for something to occur or not occur?
That, that certainly could be one of the base considerations is, uh, land use space.
That sounds like Bella has something she'd like to share.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to add a little bit that there are other, um, plan review overlay zones that aren't as black and white as the floodplain. Um, like for example, uh, in the beginning of Weaverville, for aesthetic purposes, you have to get planning commission review on specific parcels. So I already have this on the docket with our general plan team about. I just wanted to provide that as a contextual example. And then there's other case law that exists more recently, um, about various cannabis type overlay zones that we can look into with the team. So I just wanted to add that.
So I'll just ask, uh, again, let's keep it as high level as possible. Does the board want staff to pursue some interim measure other than what we've given direction for of option one, which is August of 2025, to address the three opt out requests or not?
So I will call them quasi-opt outs right now. They're.
Well, they're, they're nothing right now, except.
On paper or?
Yeah, they're, they're requests that have sat for three years.
So do we get ourselves in hot water? Because I think a couple, last meeting, the meeting before, we turned down a fellow because of he was in an opt out or quasi-opt out.
That wasn't our reason for.
The reason, okay, I just wanted to make sure we didn't.
Nope.
That wasn't the whole reason.
Yeah, I want to see ideas. I don't, I think, how can an idea be hurtful? Ideas are only opening possibilities to what can be, and it's also hearing everyone. And I think sometimes it can be really misleading when, um, some of the public comment that comes forward is on paper before us. Not all of the public comment is in the airspace. And, um, ignoring the public comment that's on paper, um, is wrong. It's easy to do though. It is very easy to be swayed only by what you hear auditorily and not realize that what is in a plethora of emails, um, also has merit and concern. And so I, I want to hear any idea that is, can be brought forward for discussion.
Okay. So, um, just again, because this was all tied back to weeks and weeks ago where we said we'd try to move quickly to get back to folks. I think board direction is to pursue something to come back for a temporary solution that could be at least discussed. And that I would like that to be, uh, at the next meeting. Again, not deciding on something, but at least that we're presented with stuff that we can discuss without being told we can't discuss it.
Is the next meeting.
So you want, you want potential options just for discussion, but no intent to decide?
I would say, if you're going to bring something to the board, you should agendize it as possible action.
Yeah, we should.
I'm just wanting to scope the, I'm just wanting to scope the item. I'm happy to bring it back as a discuss and, and decide. Uh, I'm, I'm just with the timeframe and priorities, I'm just trying to scope how much we're going to be able to put into each of the options and really flush them out and bring back legitimate discussion topics and be ready for a decision. If that's the direction, that we were pressed in that direction.
Well, my, my only concern about, um, bringing it back for action is that I, I'm, I'm living, I'm living in a time void. We, we sat for three years. We heard them a month or two ago. We said, we'll come back and talk about this. And if we wait now and we discuss seven or eight options that day for hours and heard a lot of public comment, if we're going to now take two or three months to come back with something we can act upon, come back and say, all right, we kicked it around. Here's a few different things. Can you give a staff direction that you want us to pursue any of them? Before you waste your time coming up with something that, that doesn't get supported? So that's why I was more leaning to staff direction, but I, I'm just, at this point, I just want a decision on how we move forward.
I think that, that's why I say, if, if you're going to agendize it, agendize it as discussion, direction, possible action. If it comes back and it's like, oh, yeah, this is simple, it won't be. But if it comes back and it looks simple, we could have, we could take action. Or we could take action by giving direction to staff to pursue something more. But rather than limiting our ability to move on something if we think we should, I would say, if you're going to agendize it, agendize it with the option to make, uh, to take action.
So then I would ask, how long does staff think they need to do that?
We'll give it a shot for next week.
Okay. So what direction from staff or, or board is as soon as practical?
Yep.
So I don't want to, if it's just completely unviable, then I'm not trying to create something that's unreasonable, but.
If we get into it and it won't happen, that gives us a now, uh, to say as soon as practical with the desire for next week, but not a mandate.
Okay. Okay. Under human resources, item 4.4, appoint Christine Gaffney as the auditor controller effective April 1st, 2024 to serve the remainder of the term expiring end of December, 2026. Proximate cost and salary and benefits per month for the auditor controller at A step is 1,000, $14,129.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Supervisors. Leila Kassiz, Director of Human Resources here for the county. As you know, in our last session, uh, we did have interviews, uh, of all of the, um, qualified, minimally qualified candidates, uh, that were, um, interested in becoming this, uh, interim appointment person. Christine was the person selected at that time to move forward. We gave an offer, um, of employment. It was accepted. We are here now asking for you to appoint her as the interim, sorry, not interim, as the auditor controller, um, effective yesterday, uh, to serve the remainder of the term expiring, uh, end of December, 2026. And I'm here for questions if you have it.
Any questions?
I think we should talk for a couple hours about this.
I've got plenty of time.
Yeah, I mean, she's been here since nine. I have no questions at all.
Okay. All right. Public comment? In the room? Online?
I have no raised hands.
Entertained in motion?
I will move that we appoint Christine Gaffney as auditor controller effective April 1st, 2024 to serve the remainder of the term expiring December, 2026.
I will second.
Supervisor Kogan?
Hi.
Supervisor Frazier?
Hi.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Chairman Letweiler?
Hi. Closed session report out from March 19th, 2024. Item 5.1, Government Code Section 54954.5E, Public Employee Appointment, County Council. Direction was given to staff. Is there any public comment on closed session? In the room?
I have no raised hands.
Okay. We will now move into closed session. Thank you.